Roll call.
Mayor Candelara.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Wentworth.
Here.
Counselor Angeloni.
Here.
Counselor Armin.
Here.
Counselor Caprio. Counselor Diamond.
Here.
Counselor Fawnin.
Here.
Counselor Fucci. Counselor Rose.
Here.
May I have a motion to approve the August eleventh, two thousand fifteen WPCA Town Council Agenda?
Just had some corrections, if I could. I have spotted a few. Page three was under paragraph seven, the STEAP is S-T-E-A-P. And under eight, be the RFP Counselor Rose and Mayor Candelora were part of that group. And page six, just some spellings for NEUBIG, N-E-U-B-I-G, and Torino one R.
All right, I believe it was moved by Deputy Mayor Wentworth, seconded by Counselor Armin, noting corrections. Roll call.
Mayor Candelara.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Wentworth.
Yes.
Counselor Angeloni.
Yes.
Counselor Armin.
Yes.
Counselor Diamond.
Epstein.
Counselor Fawnin.
Yes.
Counselor Rose.
Yes.
Water Pollution Control Authority Agenda. Item three, correspondence, citizen's statements, having none. Item four, unfinished business, none. Item five, new business, sewer works operations budget fiscal year two thousand fifteen, two thousand sixteen.
Good evening, everybody. Included in the agenda packet is a draft preliminary budget for the Water Pollution Control Authority Sewer Works Operating Fund. Basically, the front sheet showing estimated revenues and and the estimated expenditures and projecting an anticipated user fee on a per-unit basis. Basically, a little history, we've been at three hundred seventy-five dollars per unit for the past four years. And we've been anticipating that we're going to have to increase that number in the near future, and basically, the near future is upon us. The driving force isn't the normal operations. Our operations were pretty steady. We pay, the bulk of our cost is what we pay intermunicipally for when we discharge at Bramford, North Haven, and Great New Haven WPCA. They charge us based upon the gallons. We meter the gallons and we pay them based upon that. And that number's been pretty steady through the years. There's slight ticks up and down depending on if it's a wet year or a dry year, but generally, it's been pretty steady. Our energy costs have been pretty steady. So, we've leveled off pretty good in terms of that. The driving force on any future increase is primarily capital cost. Basically, we have some internal capital costs that we'll have to be adjusting. What we've included in here is we've got to do some pump upgrades, the White Hollow, that whole system up there. Those pumps are approaching twenty-five years, and we're trying to put together a replacement program for some of the pumps to make sure we place them in a timely manner, and we don't, because we don't want to get caught with a problem again at the worst time. So, we've, basically, we have about fifty thousand dollars in there for pump upgrades, basically for the Mansfield Drive Pumping Station for this year. We tried to do it last year, it just couldn't happen. We were trying to work out some of the details. We didn't spend that money, so it helped give us a little bit more of a fund balance for this year, but we will have those done for next year. The other capital costs have been basically what we've been paying for, like North Haven, when they did the sewage treatment plant upgrade, we paid our percentage of that upgrade, which were significant funds. Same thing applies to Bramford. We're paying approximately one hundred eighty thousand, one hundred ninety thousand dollars a year towards their treatment plant upgrade based upon our percentage of flow, and we have about another seven or eight years of that that we have to pay on an annual basis. We have been paying that primarily from supplemental sewer assessments that we recouped over the years when additional developments were built, special connection fees. They currently, the way we do it right now, they pay us upfront, lump sum, and we put it in that fund, and that goes towards capital improvements. We had a significant amount of funding in there at one time from all the supplemental sewer assessments and special connection fees, but that's dwindled down. We're predicting we're basically, pretty much, will have run out by about two thousand seventeen, depending on if any new connections come in, but that's sort of what we're looking at. And we're going to have to start funding that through the user fee. We've been funding part of it through the user fee, but we've been offsetting it coming out of that capital fund. And once that runs dry, it has a direct impact upon the user fee.
So, what would you project, it said three seventy-five per unit now, what would you project it would go up to?
Well, what we have in there, in the draft, is a recommendation for four hundred dollars a unit for the current year. And again, we have two things. The capital, our supplemental fund is running dry, so we're going to have to fund more of the capital improvements out of the user fee, which will result in an increase, an anticipated increase around two thousand seventeen, predicting that. We also have, Bramford is trying to do some significant upgrades to their treatment plant. They're trying to do it over the next five or six years. We just met with them last week. They sort of laid it on us late in the game, but they're actually funding it from some funds that they have. They're going to fund about three million dollars of it upfront. They're transferring from a capital fund to a operating fund. And they're looking for us to pay our percentage of that, which is roughly ten percent, which is roughly three hundred thousand dollars. They're doing it upfront in one year. They happen to have the money and they're able to do it. They were looking for us. They talked to us about doing it in a one-year thing, which we certainly can't absorb or handle. We had a meeting with them and they're agreeable to a five-year payback period. So, if that goes into effect, and I would say everything looks like it will have to, we'll have to work out all the details, that'll have an effect of an additional twenty-five dollars a year increase in the user fee. And that is anticipated to start next year. So, what we're looking at potentially is about twenty-five dollar increase this year, another twenty-five dollars next year to cover Bramford's. We have to work out all the details, but that's what it looks like. And then the following year, because our capital fund will have pretty much run out of funding, another potentially twenty, twenty-five dollars increase in the user fee in two thousand seventeen. Again, that's subject to if any new connections come in, that funding goes in there, that maybe could delay it a little bit.
I have a question.
Yep.
Do we know how many hookups we have? In other words.
Yep. Yeah, basically, this is the estimated units. That's the equivalent single-family. What I do is based upon the flow, I take the total flow and divide it out, get an equivalent number of commercial units, and add that to the residential units to come out with the estimated units.
Have you seen a drop in that number?
I've seen, actually, it's generally pretty steady this year. It hasn't changed too much. Different users, there'll be an up and a down. Some businesses, they may not be doing what they used to do, and a lot of times, somewhere else, someone picks it up. But I've watched that over the years. It hasn't really changed that much. There's a slight fluctuation, but nothing significant.
Kurt, do we do anything, would we save, and I thought we get to pay this money to state?
We have to pay money to East Haven. Yeah, that's in the, it's under three eighteen intermunicipal. That's a placeholder I put in there, and probably a little low. I have about fifty-eight thousand dollars per year estimated for Great New Haven WPCA in my. Great New Haven WPCA, yeah, that's the East Haven connection. This is Great New Haven WPCA took over East Haven and surrounding communities. That number will probably come in more like sixty-five thousand to seventy thousand dollars a quarter, but I just got from an email from Great New Haven WPCA. It's a file number, but again, I have a placeholder. It can affect the bottom line a little bit, but not significantly, I don't believe, to change the recommended user charge, the annual user charge.
And then utilities, that's increased.
The utilities are pretty steady. The fluctuation is if you have a wet year, you have more flow, you have to pump a little bit more. A dry year, it goes down a little bit. The rain varies, you know, goes up a little bit, but it's generally pretty steady overall. I really have studied these over the years, and the big, like you said, the biggest thing with our operations, we just entered an agreement with the Olea Water for an extended period, and basically, there are numbers, about a two percent increase per year. So, they're pretty steady, predictable, no wide swings. It's the capital, capital fund that we pay to other municipalities, and what we do internally, capital is the variable. And like I said, those are, because our fund, our capital fund is basically running dry in the near future. We're going to have to supplement what we, how we fund all the capital costs for the treatment plant upgrades out of the user fee.
Is the business, what is the business fee versus the residential?
Business fee, it's based upon their metered water consumption.
Water meter.
Yeah, there's a water meter and it.
So, that can vary from business to business.
And that's, we get the water records from the regional water authority and build them based upon that. A house, a house is a house is a house, whether they got one person or five people in it, we just don't meter them. It's a flat rate. Apartment's the same thing. Apartment pays the same as a house. But like I said, I mean, that's the impact, and Bramford, that was a shock to us in terms of their capital improvements. We just heard that.
That happened to us in North Haven at one time, but we went to meet with them and they came down on that.
Well, we went to meet with North Haven, we entered an agreement, we changed our agreement with them, and we basically paid them over a twenty-year period for their sewage treatment plant upgrade. With Bramford, we'd have to enter into some type of memorandum of understanding, which we'd have to work out.
Has anybody met with Bramford to do it?
Pardon me?
Has anybody met with Bramford to do it?
We met with them on a preliminary basis to get a better understanding of what they're talking about. And basically, the gentleman's agreement, you know, at that point was, okay, we're not looking at anything this year, but we'll have to look at the impact going forward, and we have to memorialize it in some type of document. They'd like to do that. I have, my intent was to put that before the WPCA at the next meeting in a couple of weeks to give you more information on it. We just.
Who did you meet with in Bramford?
First select person, the finance director, and the town engineer. And again, their improvements, their planning are all to their treatment plant, which were a direct impact to us. If they were doing pump stations somewhere else, then we shouldn't be paying for that, but the treatment plant were part of the flow there. And again, the other thing, too, is we talked to them, at some point, we need to really look at our overall intermunicipal agreement. It's actually technically supposed to be up, we looked at ten-plus years ago. It never did. We brought it up, we'd like to revisit that, make sure we memorialize everything and get it in right. I think the concept, what we've been following, we pay a percentage of their costs based upon flow. That was always the intent, and that's what the agreement, the existing agreement requires.
So, both agreements are pretty much the same with East Haven?
Again, we did North Haven's probably in early two thousands. We did Great New Haven WPCA a couple of years back. We reviewed that agreement. It's time to look at Bramford to make sure, you know, just to bring it up to date. And we have two relatively recent documents that we can make comparisons to. But again, we've been saying it, and we just didn't know when, that, you know, the user fee, we've held steady for the past four years. But because of those capital costs and really the drying up of the funding in the capital fund that we had set aside, we're looking at an increase. There's really no way around it. I mean, whether we do four hundred or three ninety-five, I mean, that, there's a little wiggle room. But the fact is, we've got to start increasing it, and we were trying, we were trying not, trying to stage it over time as best we can, but there's a couple of big hits coming up. Again, the public hearing is at the next WPCA meeting in a couple of weeks. If there's any questions, I'll do my best to cover them if you have any questions to try to answer them.
This is, so, this user fee that covers the whole, the whole year's operating cost, and it's not, it's not any general taxation dollars.
That's correct.
Like, the only people paying this, and all of it, is paid by the people who are.
Who are using, who are connected to Santeri Sewers. If you're, you have the ability to connect, but you haven't connected, you're not paying. It's anybody that is connected to the, who's using the system, is how it's set up.
So, how are the schools that are tied in done? Is that metered by the water?
That's based upon metered flow. Yeah, and we do get all those from the water authority, we get their annual flows.
Do we know what Bramford's sewer user fee is for their people?
I'd be lying, it's two something.
About half, what ours is.
It is. Great New Haven WPCA is about four thirty-something. Theirs I know, because they publish it. I don't know quite where Bramford's going to end up. And I don't know, Bramford, they may, there may be some offline funding for some of the capital stuff that.
Is Bramford fully funded, fully sewer?
I think the majority, probably ninety-five percent, Santeri Sewers. Bramford didn't have a user fee in the past, but because of their recent upgrade, they did to the sewer treatment plant. The feds required it.
So, we're actually, you know, the reality is, we're hurt by not having more people tied in, because your infrastructure can handle a lot more than it does, and when we go off and build things like a, basically, an exclusionary or private sewer system for the White Hollow District, and, you know, no businesses or anybody downstream to that can tie into that system, and it's asinine. It was asinine when it was put in, and now it's showing up.
Yeah, there's a limit.
And I voted against doing it that way.
The other thing, too, is our intermunicipal agreements, both of them, limit what we can ultimately discharge to the Santeri Sewer System. Bramford, I think we had a higher number, about, when they did the treatment plant upgrade, we asked for a half a million dollars, I mean, a half a million gallons per year design flow, average daily flow, plant. We're using three hundred, three fifty now, thereabouts. We looked to add additional area to the east along Route eighty, you know, within reason. Same thing, we had the same type of agreement with North Haven. When they did their treatment plant upgrade, we bought into a certain capacity.
So, is our fee for them based on that half a million gallons a day? Is that how it's ten percent?
It actually comes out, we're about right at the.
Or are we based by gallonage?
We're doing it based upon flow, and that.
Based on flow?
Yeah. And it's essentially the same number, because we're about a little under ten percent of the flow, which we were asking for about, about ten percent of capacity. Anyway, that's what we're facing going forward. We're looking at a four hundred dollar per unit this year, but again, I just have to emphasize that going forward, we're looking.
A lot of people love to have to pay that four hundred off.
Oh. If you can't fix your septic system, it's money well spent.
Oh, yeah.
If it is, it's like when Comcast came to town and the bill was nine bucks a month.
Yeah.
And the first sewer user fees were pretty reasonable. And, you know, so it's twenty-five dollars this year, and twenty-five next, and twenty-five.
You know, it could be twenty-five.
Maybe four fifty.
Yeah.
And what's the year after that?
Again, I think capital is the biggest one driving. That's an unknown. Again, our operations, I don't see a big change in that. We just haven't seen much. But again, North Haven did their upgrade, I mean, pretty soon, there'll be another twenty-year look at, and they may have to do significant capital upgrades to their facilities. It's a recurring thing. I mean, equipment only lasts so long, and they have to do upgrades to keep their operations going, just like we're looking at some of our pump stations to replace pumps. You know, they have a life.
Does White Hollow have their own pumping station? Is that the situation?
There's actually three pumping stations that were constructed as part of that project. One in White Hollow, one at Reed's Gap, and one at Mansfield Drive. And they were, basically, in the early nineteen nineties, they were constructed, so they're at twenty-five years, and again, we've, the general facility is in good shape. It's the mechanical pumps that you've got to keep on top of, and we want to replace them before there's any major problems, because when you have a problem, that's not going to be the kind of problem you want to have. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Kurt. Item six, citizen's statements and petitions.
May I just say, Mr. Mayor, that I would like to request that we make sure that when people come up and address council, they identify themselves and know what their tie-in may be to said subject, because a couple of people have come up and I didn't know them, and they never identified themselves, so.
Sure. Thank you. Okay, regular town council meeting. Reports of committees, boards, and commissions. Item A, Permanent Project Building Committee.
Permanent project did not meet since our last council meeting. They are scheduled to meet on September fourteenth. But at your desk tonight, you will see the contract for the TBS roof project for Titan Roofing, and also the payments, the paperwork for the payments. Two payments have been made already on the roof project, and one was just submitted, which will be going forward to the Permanent Project Building Committee in September. And I asked for this information from the town manager, and the reason that I did is I have been attending all of the Permanent Project Building Committee meetings, and for this project, it has been stated along the way that it would, the only thing that would be left to do once school started was to put the panels on the three areas of the roof that were going to be pitched. And that is not the case. It's a very active construction site, and we have asked Tom Hibbert, the architect, to be here tonight to answer our questions in regards to this. On page two of the contract, one of the things that you will notice in item three point three is that they shall achieve substantial completion of the entire work not later than August twenty-first, two thousand fifteen, sixty days from the date of commencement. And I'm not exactly sure what constitutes substantial completion. If you drive by the site or go onto the site, you will.
It's usually considered a punch list when it's to the punch list as a substantial completion.
Because you'll notice the three areas that are supposed to have the pitched roof, which is the gym, the library, and the whole front administrative and classroom wing, only two of the areas have started to have the steelwork put up for the frame for the pitched work. And it's just the straight parts. It's not the roof, the actual pitched part of the roof. The whole front wing does not have anything. They might have some base plates down according to the notes in here, but there's no structure standing up on it yet.
It's not substantially completed.
Do you know what the completion date was?
Well, according to.
I mean, I'm sorry, the start date.
They started to do some preliminary work, preliminary work prior to school starting, I mean, finishing in June, just getting staging put up, that type of thing. The bulk of the work, I mean, they started on June twenty-third, the first day after school was out.
So, we have to find out what their.
If the architect's here, maybe he can shed some light on where they're at, when they're going to finish, and how we got here.
Is that on the agenda?
Well, I believe that's on the agenda.
Is it later?
Yeah.
Skip to that.
I didn't see it on the agenda.
No.
I would just talk on it now.
Yeah, I didn't see it as an agenda.
Yeah, I had asked Michael to have him come, to have him come this evening, so.
So, how did we get here? When are they going to be done?
Tom Hibbert, Hibbert and Rose Architects. What we always intended to have happen was, of course, to have all the flat roof areas in, and underneath the standing seam roofs, there is a temporary flat roof. There's insulation with an EPDM membrane under that, so it, you know, it was, the building was enclosed and watertight. I always thought that we were supposed to do the frame and the metal panels afterwards. The metal panels do run late. What we always want to do is get the frame up, get our final dimensions, and have the panels shop fabricated and finished in the shop. That way, we make sure, you know, we're not cutting on site and we don't have raw edges. You're going to get a better, more permanent, more durable product that will be resistant to the weather long term, so the panels, the standing screen roofs always do take some time to complete. We don't finish them in August. That was not what our, that was not substantial completion. So, we were looking to get the flat roofs done by August twenty-first, was my understanding. I don't, and apparently, there's some confusion upon that, and I guess I would have to take some of the blame for that. So, what is, how much time do you think you're looking at at this point? Well, I know they've taken their final measurements, and all the panels are expected to be on site within two weeks, and it should go up fairly quick. It should be, we should be doing punch lists hopefully within a month, four weeks, is what I've been told. Because it does say that liquidated, an overage is a thousand dollars a day, potentially, right? I, you know, I have a lot of contracts. I'll take your word for that. I don't have the contract in front of me. Why do we read it wrong? I don't know.
It's part of Article three point three. Liquidated damages shall be one thousand dollars for each consecutive calendar day after August twenty-first, two thousand fifteen. So, I don't know how that is determined.
Well, is there, is there a reason that's out of, beyond their control, that it's taking longer than this? Was there a delay on our end or anything like that, or is it just on their end? Was there a delay on our end or anything like that, or is it just on their end?
I think everybody agrees, we never expected to have the standing seam roof in place by August twenty-first, and that is the case. And as I stated, that just takes a long time, lead time to fabricate. You know, standing, it has to be, we have to get the final dimensions. Those are custom fabricated when we know those final dimensions. The flat roofs, you know, we just, you cut the materials on site, and they're very, I guess you could say they're kind of a commodity material.
Just wondering why the contractor would agree to those dates, knowing that.
Right.
But, so the standing seam, are you talking just the panels only?
I thought it was the frame also, honestly.
Well, I mean, that was, that was never mentioned at the building committee meetings. It was always just the panels, because it was said that that would be the least noisy to put up there, and it would go quickly, and that they would have to be fabricated afterwards. So that was fully understood, but when you look at the roof, there's not a lot of framework that's done on all the sections that are going to have the standing seam roof.
Is there work going on a daily basis now while the kids are in school?
Yes, yes.
Yeah, I mean, that's our concern also, is that are we affecting, you know, the learning process? With noise, smell, parking space, et cetera.
I mean, they're not working Sat- I don't know, there doesn't seem to be an urgency to get it done. I mean, because they're not working on Saturdays, they're not trying to get it done, from what I can see.
Well, at the job meeting on Thursday, we had a substantial crew out there of almost twenty people. We met with the principal, she was there, we walked the building a little bit with her. She was at the meeting, and we also, the fire marshal was also there, and he had some concerns, nothing immediate, but he had what might become potential problems, and we addressed those with him. But in the meeting with the principal, she said it was not having adverse impact on the school operations or the learning.
Well, it was also the first day of school.
Yeah. Well, we'll be meeting with her again on Thursday, again, in two days.
So what was the actual starting date? Because I'm looking at this, and it says June twenty-second, two thousand fourteen.
Um, that's the contract date, and I don't know if they actually started on June twenty-second.
But it couldn't have been two thousand fourteen.
If it wasn't, it was within a day or two of that.
Was it twenty-third, didn't you?
Well, no, this says two thousand fourteen. It couldn't have been two thousand fourteen, because we didn't even have it out to bid in two thousand fourteen.
So the problem I see with this, and, you know, we have an attorney here and an attorney over there, I'm sure you guys have read this, but the, you know, three dash three is, the contractor shall achieve substantial completion of the entire work no later than August twenty-first. So could you show me where it says they only had to finish the rubber roof? Because I don't, I don't see that in this contract.
I don't know, I'd have to review the contract and the notes with the...
See, the way it works in town is, if you miss something like that, then the town has to call the bond, and it really gets ugly. So it would behoove the contractor, and I'm not even quite sure what your role is here, but the other thing that bothers me is, looking at this payment schedule, it would appear to me that, and I don't see a schedule of values, but it would appear to me that the reason it's not a sense of urgency is because the job has been front-loaded, and there's not that much money left...
Right.
...to be paid. So go do another job somewhere, our foot's in the door here. If you care to speak to that, I mean, I don't know, and you know what, I'm going to say it here, shame on our building committee for approving the payments, if they actually approve them. And I got to tell you, you can't go by what an architect says. If you're going to be on a building committee, use common sense. You know, if you're looking at a job, and it's like, wow, this doesn't look three quarters of the way done, don't approve three quarters of the money. I mean, I, believe me, I do a lot of metal roofs, and the panels cost a lot of money, and the labor to put them on is quite extensive. So there's not enough money left, the way I see this, for what's left to be done. But, you know, you do, because you're approving the payments.
Yeah, I do.
And you do. But also, I mean, maybe I'm having, I am a graduate of North Bramford, maybe I'm having a reading and comprehending problem here, but we need to, we need to give it to the town attorney, and, because I've already asked him. He says, well, Al, you don't know what work is. You know, I don't know what the word "work" means unless we have the whole contract. But I've signed a lot of AIA contracts, and they're, and they're very fair to the owner and the contractor. And so unless, if this is the only document that we have, it would appear that on the twenty-first of August, substantial completion of the entire work was supposed to be done.
To me, that means almost cleaning up.
Well, I don't know that I'd go that far, but...
Punch list.
Punch list.
There, we would have had a sloped roof on.
Yeah, you'd be ninety-five percent finished.
So I guess, I guess at this point, we would need to, I mean, you know what, it is what it is, on the other hand. We have a school that's open, the roof is where it's at. Why wouldn't they be working Saturday and Sunday now?
I don't, I don't know that you're not working Saturday. I would have to look into that. I don't, they have worked a lot of Saturdays. I don't know, I don't think they've worked every Saturday. They have worked a lot of Saturdays without calling contractor. I don't know if he worked last Saturday, or if he intends to work this Saturday.
They did not work last Saturday.
They did not work last Saturday. They did work a number of Saturdays. I know that.
And they didn't have, which I wish they did, but they didn't get any rain days.
Right.
So, anyway, I mean, I mean, it's probably, no matter what we do here, and it's probably not worth having the, you know, the attorney look at it at this point, because then you're just spending more money. It's not going to be done for a month, and no matter what we do, it's not going to be done for a month. So, I'm open to any other idea.
Well, I guess I have a question. This goes all the way back to the bid process, when we first start. It seems to me like we go out to bid, and it happened at MBIS, where you get the big name, Turner, or Titan, and these guys come in and bid, and they end up getting awarded the project. And the next thing you know, it's subbed out. So why is that happening? Why are we subbing out? Why aren't we getting the people that are awarded the bid?
Well, is that the case here?
Yeah.
I don't believe that's the, what led you to say that?
I don't know, it's my understanding that this, there's a lot of subs on this job, that this job has been subbed out.
I don't believe, no, I don't, I don't see that. We hired Titan Roofing. I don't have a lot of experience with them, but the people we're seeing on the site, the majority of those people, the roofers and a fair number of the sheet metal are with the Titan operation year-round. Now, they're a union operation in the winter. This is the type of job, company that gets a lot smaller in the winter, and some of those guys go back to the hall. And also, they're required, they're actually, their office, we're right on the edge of two locals. Their office is in the other local, I forgot the numbers, but when they move over into this local, they have to hire so many people from that local. So that may, it's not subbed out, but because they are a union contractor, we're right on the line of where the local is. So when they, if they don't have, they have to hire so many people out of that local when you're working in a territory out of their, we'll call it their home local. So they're all members of the sheet metal union, but you've got, you've got a blend of two different locals, and there's no way to avoid that. But they haven't, Titan hasn't taken this and given it to ABC Sheet Metal or XYZ Roofer.
Well, our concern is the delay. I mean, that's, is that, would that be a cause for a delay, a month delay?
No, I mean, it might cause a little bit of delay. I mean, in the summer, we're absolutely hurting for, every roofer is out of the hall, every sheet metal guy is out of the hall. I mean, I could plead for Titan's case that there's always a labor shortage, but that's everybody in the roofing business, in the sheet metal business this time of year.
There's a huge labor shortage in construction, qualifying people.
Actually, if you want to join the union, join the sheet metal union. They've got openings.
But in fairness to you, I do remember when we were talking about this and going forward, you did say it was going to be a tight schedule and difficult to meet. And again, going back to when we went out to bid, you know, sometimes if the, if the documents aren't ready, we shouldn't put it out. You put a few Band-Aids on it, and you put it out next January for the following summer. I do remember myself saying, you know, if it's tight and we're going to go forward, do we need a time is of the essence contract?
Right.
I know I said that.
Right.
That isn't what we got.
And I remember you saying, too, if we didn't go out in January, it could affect the cost.
You're going to, you're going to pay more money.
Yep.
You know, if you go out, and I don't know when we're out, you go out in May or late April, most of the guys have at least one, you know, one school or something, or a big building to do. So I think that, you know, we can all, we can all learn from this, that, you know what, set a deadline that we're going to go out for work to be done in the summer, and do not pass it, you know? And it isn't the last day the kids are in school, you know? It should be probably February or no later than March, that you're going to get stuff to go out to bid. And if you didn't make it, it's got to go ahead of you. I mean, as long as these guys are working diligently, five days a week, see their union, they don't want to pay time and a half.
I don't want to speak for Titan, but I think, you know, I'm not going to argue...
So as long as they're working, and they're going to be, they can be done in a month. I mean, I don't know what else you do unless...
We're certainly at a point, we're disappointed with the prior listed date, and we're definitely looking at another month's of work on the site. We can't go backwards, that's not going to change right now. But one thing I did hear you say that really troubles me, and, Tom, you denied it when Al made the statement, but we didn't get any specifics. Al specifically questioned whether or not the contract had been paid in advance of the work being done, such that the amount of money remaining to be paid out was less than, or more than the, excuse me, the amount of remaining funds was less than the work that had to be done. There's no incentive for the Titan Roofing to get in there and get the work finished as expeditiously as possible. You said that wasn't the case. What specifically remains to be paid, and how much is the value of the work remaining to be done?
Well, I would also remind you, I don't know why you don't have a schedule of values on the back.
Oh, maybe we do. We just, I just got this tonight, let me look.
Oh, it is? Yeah, this is, it isn't all roofing. You've also got a substantial mechanical component also, that is also concluded, you know? So if you look at a straight percentage, you might question if it was just roofing, but you've also got three mechanical units on there that are also, all been installed, you know? They're up and running. I mean, we've got to do a little work to tweak them and get them balanced out. So there's, it's, you know, there's substantial masonry component.
I don't know if they're all running yet.
Yeah. But, you know, there's substantial value in mechanical equipment and masonry, had to raise a lot of through-wall flashings, so that's all completed. So I would like to differ respectfully with Mr. Rose.
So we do have a running, you know, we got the balance to finish here, I mean, it was like, it was like a two and a half million dollar job, and we've got four hundred ninety-four thousand left to finish.
And what's the value of the work remaining to be done over the rest of the next month?
I would say it's about, you know, just under four hundred thousand dollars, around four hundred thousand dollars, four, four fifty on the roof.
And you're confident that that's...
Yeah. So, is the, are the metal panels paid for? I mean, would the building committee see those bills, or... Or is that...
They wouldn't see that bill.
That's, that's part of, if I read this correctly, under column H, balance to finish, there's an item that says labor for panels of one sixty-five and, and metal, let me see, material, metal panels, metal roofs, of a hundred eighty thousand. So that's part of the remaining balance of four ninety-four, if I read this document correctly. Is that, it's the last payment...
Yep.
...that they submitted to you for approval to get, to go to the building committee? So that four ninety-four would actually be what would be submitted at the end of September for payment in October.
It would be something less, because we don't see all the panels being installed until probably the first week of, yeah, they'd probably, it would be close, but I don't think it'd be there.
Okay.
We'll have to wait and see.
So between retainage and balance to finish, it's roughly six hundred and fifty thousand dollars, according to this statement. So that means out of the two point five million, two hundred and ninety thousand was the bid for mechanicals.
Is that, I don't have the scheduling values in front of me, yeah.
It was, it was two hundred and ninety. So that, I'm assuming would get paid, is already paid off as part of this here.
I haven't been up there. For those of you who live in the Village of Norfolk, is the, is the, do we have a sloped roof framed up there?
No.
No.
I did go up there out and took some photos. Right now, it looks to me like they have the fence around the whole edge of the building, and I saw a pile to the right of materials. I don't know what they were, they're under a tarp, but I did not see any trusses or any type of slope.
So if the metal's not, if the slope's not framed, how did they measure the, how they measure the panels and get them ordered? But that's not done yet.
Well, they just have to wait until they get the base plates all laid out, and from there, they can do the mathematical, they know where, what exact size the truss will be, and they get the panels to the exact size. But they like to get that finalized before they make a final commitment on the panels.
So your best guess, estimate would be you're going to be complete when?
Early October, is what I've been told. First week. And I mean, doing punch lists, final trim work, final trim work.
So is the steel on site for the trusses as well?
The entire frame is on site.
It's on site. So is that what, that's got to be what's next, I would imagine.
Yes.
Being assembled.
Yes, that's what's probably under the tarp. They come in early in the morning and load the roof, what they need for the day.
So the only, the only thing that I would say, yeah, you might want to look at, and again, I'm not sure, we only got this stuff tonight, but there is the thousand dollar a day fine. And, you know, maybe, maybe that's worth looking into, because that would light a fire under a contractor. I've been there myself.
Come up with a reasonable date, and you say after this date?
Well, I mean, the reasonable date was the twenty-first, that they signed. So if we had a complete understanding of this contract, and they signed that, they signed their name that after, after August twenty-first, they were subject to a thousand dollar fine. And that's, you know, the way this works is that we want to implement it. Do you agree with that?
Depends on the substantial, and that consists of a collection of documents that are referred to in there. I would defer also, well, I wouldn't defer, but as the architect, I view in effect an agent of the town in this respect, in determining whether or not they're in compliance.
Yes.
So we look to you on that, and do you have an opinion as to whether or not, as of August twenty-first, they were in substantial completion of the project?
My understanding of where the progress was supposed to be, I would say yes.
If we question that, I would think we'd have to look into that first, because if our own agent... If we question that, that, I would think we'd have to look into that first, because if our own agent believes that it was substantial, we wouldn't have good cause, I don't think, to go with a thousand dollar day yet. But we could talk about that further.
Yeah, and I, it's tough to talk about any contract in detail without it in front of you. That's the other thing.
About what?
Well, I, remember, I'm looking, you're talking about a contract that I haven't even looked at
Oh, contract.
in detail
Yeah.
for two months.
Well, we, well, I think, I think probably since Al's referring apart to the contract, that that might be, rather than to hold you to any representation made me this evening, for, for you to get back to us, get back to the town manager or to Al, uh, which, or myself, with respect to looking at the list and determining, uh, on the contract, whether your professional opinion is, with respect to this contract, that they, as of October, as of August twenty-first, that they had substantially completed. And I presume that there's a, there's a definition within the multiple documents that are referred in this abbreviated document
Right.
as to what substantial is. There is a, there is a reference to what the work is, and it refers you to half a dozen other documents.
Yes, and that, yeah, that, that's exactly the problem, having to make a...
Would it be fair that, would it be fair to ask the architect to take a look at those documents in the first instance and give us an informed opinion as to whether or not on August twenty-first, based on the definition of work and on the best definition of substantial compliance? And it's your opinion, thumbs up or thumbs down in regard to that?
Yes, I think that's fair. I mean, I should, yeah, I mean, it's, it would require a review of the documents.
Okay. That's, that's what I would suggest for this evening's purposes.
And also, I would, I would ask the town manager to talk to the Board of Ed and make sure that, you know, they're okay with this and that it's not costing them monies to operate school, you know, working around this. 'Cause that'd be another reason for me to... I've read an awful lot of construction contracts and, uh, I don't think either one of your arguments hold water, but, but again, they're gonna, you know, they're gonna be done when they're gonna be done unless we, unless it gets ugly. And, and, you know, and, and contractors know that. We don't want to dismiss them and, and call their bond and find them, 'cause then we gotta go find somebody else to finish it. So, as long as they're there and working every day, that's the fastest way to get the roof done. Anyway.
Now, how many updates have you been providing the town, I don't know, manager or superintendent or, 'cause I know I've seen, I've seen in the town manager's report, um, I don't know.
I don't know what you mean by updates. I mean, we've had a weekly job meeting.
Okay.
At a minimum, every week.
And at that job meeting, is there anyone from the town attending those meetings?
Uh, yes, Michelle Lockwood has been a almost consistent attendant. Don Wannicky has been there at a number of them from the Board of Ed, Chris Lindsay, the principal, Bill Chody has been there on, on, at a number of meetings. So, the town has had, I think, that it's been rare that the town hasn't had at least two members of either the town staff or Board of Ed staff at a meeting. I mean, on a few occasions, we had one person, but you've had, I would say you've had very good representation.
Boy, that's a judgment call. If you're saying that list of people is very good, I'll leave it there.
But...
All right, I think, you know what, we're...
Well, I just have one more question. I mean, at, at that point, I mean, um, did anyone express any concern that, you know, we weren't gonna make the deadline? It must have been noticeable that, you know...
I would say among the group that attended, that they understood that the standing seam metal roof was not going to be completed by the twenty-first.
'Cause that, I don't know.
So, I guess everybody but the council knew that.
Yeah, well, that's what I'm going with this, is that we were the last, you know, this was not conveyed to us.
Last ones to find anything out.
I don't, I've been at all the building committee meetings, and the part of the standing seam roof that has been talked about that would not be finished would be the panels being put on. But they are far from that point of the panels, because you don't even have the framework done. It was always talked about the panels being done and that that was the least noisy part, and it would not be an interruption to the school day because it wasn't that noisy.
Is that the building you work in, Rose?
Yes.
Well, what do you think of the process?
I'm, I'm not gonna comment on it because I don't want to speak for the Board of Education. And I'm not speaking, I'm, I'm not gonna get caught into that situation, so.
Well, I think at this point, we, we need to express to the contractor that they're, they're behind. They need to pick up this, pick up the pace and get it done here.
And to the building committee is that, um, the next approval for payment, they really need to question...
Yeah, especially with the amount of money that's left.
The pa- the, the payment on it.
I mean, like Al said, I'm, I'm in construction too, and I'm not comfortable with that amount of money for what's left to do on the job.
Michelle, did you have your hand up?
Yes.
Could, could you come up to the microphone, please?
When we had our meeting last Thursday with Michelle Lockwood, purchasing assistant for the town of North Branford. When we had our job meeting last week with Christine, the principal of TVS, she did state that it was her understanding that the project would not be completed until October, and wasn't sure where the September date came in that it would be completely finished by then. She said she was very happy with the progress to date and found that Titan was very accommodating, helping out the Board of Ed, lifting ventilators up to the roofs and so forth, so. I understand that, that, you know, the council's concerned, you know, we, it's a huge project in an eight-week period, but there's still a lot of work to be done, but according to the applications, they're about seventy-five percent. As Tom mentioned, you look at just what the air conditioning units alone were for those three units that Commercial Air has installed. So, you know, that's been ongoing for the last few weeks of getting those installed, and then they'll get the air balanced and so forth over the next couple of weeks. So, like I said, Christine thought, she said she was very pleased with the progress of the work, didn't feel there was any interruption with the kids, and if there was, they could adapt the kids to go to a different playground or whatever else needed to be done. So, and I do attend the weekly meetings with the roofers, Tom, and the Board of Ed.
I just think it would have been nice for the councils being included in some of the, you know, more information, you know, to the council as far as the project went, you know, we, I mean, I know we got, I don't know, two or three progress reports maybe.
We get, I get job minutes from Tom and they're distributed to everybody that attends, and Mike gets a copy. Then we also get photocopies, photos from Gordon Rossi, from the Garland Company, probably by, about every seven to ten days. So, we, the town, are certainly informed of the progress.
Do you send copies of it to council members?
Oh, absolutely.
I would like to have one.
Those are routinely went out in the weekly reports.
Right, right.
They're attached to the weekly report.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's usually the job minutes, and then you'll get copies of pictures of the progress of their, the, the job too. But, so we have another meeting Thursday.
Well, I would tell them at the next weekly meeting that they better get going, 'cause you've got one very persuasive council member who's willing to charge them a thousand dollars a day.
Okay.
Would that be you?
So, I would make that point perfectly clear to them.
I will. Thank you.
Thank you, Michelle.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Heber.
Boy, Rose, you took forever with the building committee thing.
Okay, Economic Development Commission?
They have not met, they'll meet later this month.
Uh, Park and Recreation?
Oh, timeout on economic development?
Yeah.
Where are we at with the contract for that? Are they, are they meeting with the guys or...
Talking about the center plan?
Yeah, what's going on with that?
Nothing. The meeting we had with them probably, probably about six weeks ago at this point, they were gonna get back to us in short order with their proposed contract, and nothing was ever forthcoming. Michael was calling them, and finally, he, uh, the lady, the lady from P and Z, I can't...
Carrie?
Carrie.
DeCesne?
Yes, met with them and Michael this week, I believe, right?
Uh, yeah, actually, last, last week we met. Carrie met with them a couple of times. I met with them last week.
We met tonight
Yeah.
with Michael and Carrie to discuss that meeting, and they want to make some changes to the proposal that they submitted two months ago, uh, when they were designated as the preferred developer. And what they're talking about right now is their preference would be to eliminate all residential components of, of the project and perhaps relocating some of the buildings on the site. So, that revised drawing they promised in short order, which we've heard before, uh, I don't know when it's coming. But we have nothing. We have no contract, we have no revised drawings.
So, did this council, and I know I missed that meeting, um, did you guys, you voted, like, what was the vote on that? You voted to ma- accept them as a preferred developer for the job?
They're the only game in town, yes.
Right, and, but what does that, so, someone explain to me what that means.
Means we negotiate with them exclusively to come, try to come to a contract.
So, why would we do that when they don't have a dog in the fight? So, here's the thing, guys, in the business world, there's no such thing as tying up a million-dollar property for six weeks with zero dollars. There's no such thing. Go try and buy a house, you need that check before your offer is put to somebody. So, again, this group is exactly what I thought they were. But, you know what?
What's the alternative?
What's your alternative to do what I said you should do there? Knock the buildings down, get them cleaned up, and put them for sale. Okay? Because no matter what you do there, if you want to sell it, which I'm not sure the whole town wants to sell it, but if you want to sell it, and you guys think there's this hypothetical number out there, why aren't these guys on board? Because, you know, because they're smoke and mirrors, okay? They're, so, if the town wants to sell it, and we should do something because they're rotting there, they're, they're a disgrace to drive by that, the, the old town hall, not the middle town hall, not the old one up on the hill. The paint's peeling, it's all rotted. So, go in there, do the, do the remediation, knock them down, and put a clean piece of property for sale. And if you don't want to do that, you're just spinning your wheels with a, with a dog and pony show.
Well, the idea is that we have some sort of control as to what...
And look what happened to your residential already. The whole big Yale plan, they're looking to just say, okay, and that's exactly what I said a developer was gonna do.
I'm discouraged by that, yes.
Okay.
But if you just...
All right, so we'll give them another month free, and they're our preferred developer. Well, they're, well, you guys preferred developers, they're not my preferred developer.
You put a, you put a for-sale sign on that property, right, and level everything, you, you're gonna have a right aid there. And then all the effort we, we went through for the past two and a half, three years of figuring out what the town wanted and respecting that, you lose that. Right? I mean, that was all for nothing then. I was hoping that...
Ding, 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 we have a winner. All that was a waste of time and for nothing.
That would be a shame.
Okay, well, look at it. Look at this resi- these guys already have figured out that the residential part, that the Yale study, which is about the fifth Yale study I've seen,
Don't work.
doesn't work. You know why? There's might, might be a right aid there? Because it's the only business that can make it work. Look how many businesses start up in town and aren't here six mon- they aren't here two months, never mind six months, and never mind next year. So, don't, the town shouldn't, the town's not a developer. We shouldn't think that we can make it work.
Well, the town has the responsibility to provide a quality of life to its residents though, and to respect what people want. You know, as long as it's economically viable, which I guess it may not be, I don't know. Apparently, it's not because these guys are, you know...
All I'm saying is they're tying up a piece of, in, in their words, it's a million-dollar property for zero dollars. Now, so, what are we gonna have? A three-month period, so when does the, when does their one year start from their original contract? That's, that's the thing that, you know, just makes no sense to me. It certainly makes no sense to anybody that's ever involved in a real estate transaction.
With what we're looking at now, I would say sure, because it doesn't reflect what we went through. So, why don't we just sell it then, instead of have them, you know, put what we can sell the property and have put there anyways? I was hoping it would be a little bit different, but I don't know.
So, they're, they're, so let me get this straight, they're trying to come up with a new plan, a new proposal?
That's what they claim.
Yeah.
And then we're gonna see, we'll have to, so then that'll go to economic development, and they'll look at it and see if they like it?
Well, no.
Well, it's coming through.
Let's see if we get a drawing first of all.
Yeah, we have to, we need the contract and a drawing.
If we don't get something in a week to ten days, then I think it's appropriate to call them and say, look, if you're not gonna submit something, we're just gonna terminate our negotiations with you, consider the alternatives, either put it on the market or turn it into a park. Those are your choices.
If I'm correct, what we voted on was to just negotiate, to negotiate with them.
Yeah.
We don't give them any, I mean,
Right.
we could say no to whatever they come up with. To your point, Al, I mean, I don't, I mean, maybe the right thing to do is not develop the land at all. I mean, I, I don't know.
Well, I think something has to be done, 'cause it's an eyesore.
Yeah, I, I, I agree with you, and I thought from the beginning, the right thing to do would be to knock both buildings down, level the property down.
Well, you, you have a lot more valuable piece of property, and you could say, well, no, because you have to spend money to get there. The elephant in the room is how much lead and asbestos and the little from the old, uh, fueling station, the little bit of, uh, spilled gasoline.
Well, somebody's gonna have to run for that anyway.
Is it their money for that?
Any developer that buys it is gonna dump it on the town. So, the town's gonna pay for that anyway.
That's what we negotiate though.
Okay? So, you might as well do it, and then you can put a clean piece of property for sale.
And then if you can't sell it, or you don't agree that everybody wants whatever the business is, it could always be turned into whatever.
I personally see no point going, going ahead with a developer in this, in this case, center plan. Go ahead with them if they're just going to not reflect what we want. Then there's no point going ahead with them. If they're willing to reflect what we want.
Well, they're, if they're coming in with a plan in a week to ten days, we can, we can meet in two weeks.
Take a look at the plan.
Right, exactly, so, that's where we're at.
All right, so we'll see him in two weeks. I mean, we don't have to take it.
Right.
That's the way I understood the agreement.
See it in two weeks then. Thank you.
I just, Al, if you were gonna buy a piece of property for two million, would you want the town telling you what you have to put in there?
I said that from the beginning. The town's not gonna have any input. And when you put so many restrictions on it, I think probably Center Plan's figured out, wow, we went to all our big guys, we thought we could get to come in here, and they're all like, what are you nuts? So, but that's just, that's just the way I see it.
So, you're saying that the only, only way we're gonna develop this property is put like a box of right aid there? That's the only thing that...
I'm not saying that.
No.
I'm just saying that a fairy tale wish list is an absolute joke. And I've been saying that from day one. But...
Well, you want a gazebo there, and gazebos don't pay taxes, Al.
It's all right. I still want a gazebo there.
I know.
We gotta figure out if we even want businesses in our town.
Well, that's what we have, this is, right, this is what we're gonna discuss that. It's our choice, whether we want revenue or we don't.
Yeah, well, you know, if, if, it's fine, but we're gonna be paying a lot of taxes on our houses, I could tell you that.
Well, then, right, so then we have to make the best of the situation, right?
Yep. Be looking at a forty mill rate within two years.
I think we should wait, like Joe said, and see what they come up with.
Exactly.
A week to ten days is before our next council meeting, so.
Yeah. All right.
Next.
All right, we already did, but Park and Recreation?
Park and Rec met on August twenty-fourth, and Sal Candelora was there from Connecticut Sportsplex to, um, discuss his idea that he had discussed with the council about the fields. Little League was also present at that meeting. They had a very lengthy discussion. Park and Recreation is in favor of, um, listening to Sal's idea and forming a committee. They appointed two people from the Park and Rec Commission, along with the director, Lorne Monroe, to sit down and go to the next step of the discussion, um, with Connecticut Sportsplex, as far as exactly what does this entail? You know, what's the town's commitment, what's their commitment, so that we can start developing cost, so that the, the council would have definite numbers that we could act on, um, to move forward. So, the town manager is putting... So, the town manager is putting together a meeting for next week with representatives from the Park and Rec Commission, Little League, Connecticut Sportsplex. And I was gonna sit on that committee as liaison to, since I'm liaison, liaison to Park and Rec, I was gonna be a part of that committee also to just further the talks to see once where it's going.
Who are the members of the recreation park?
Steve Torino and Michelle Provinger. And Brian Lynch is the alternate, and then Lorne Monroe would also sit in on it as director. And the town manager would be a part of it, Fran Marola would be a part of it also. So, that's where that stands. That's it.
Okay, item D, Police Commission.
The next meeting for the Police Commission is September fourteenth, and I'd also like to report that our new police officer, Kristen Fitzgerald, is expected to begin work on September eighth this month.
Is Kristen a man or a woman?
Kristen is a woman, so it'll be our second female police officer, is my understanding in the town.
She was the security officer at Jerome Harrison School prior to this.
Therefore, the male police officers have to move their, all their uniforms out of the female locker room, so we can now have a female locker room at the police station.
We'll just give them a pod.
Alright. Is there anything else?
We've got an old police station in the bottom of the old town hall.
That's right.
Is there a locker room in there? I don't think so.
Item E-
It was the Mayberry Jail.
Yeah, right. Item E, Fire Commission. I just wanna say briefly, I did receive a letter, you know, from the hospital, you know, regarding our EMTs, and what a great job these first responders did. And I'm gonna leave it at that. They have submitted the plans for moving forward with the fire training facility. So, I know they were before planning and zoning and so forth, and that's been approved, and they are moving forward. I know Michael has been working also with the police chief on our insurance to make sure we have adequate insurance for our assets that we have, as far as the trucks, turnout gear, so on and so forth, because we have made some major purchases over the last several years, and we need to make sure we have adequate insurance for the replacement value. So, that's being worked on. And C-MED, the transition seems to be going pretty well. We're still working on a couple of the bugs.
How often do we do an eval, evaluation at the firehouses to make sure that we are covered? Is that like a yearly process or arbitrary?
Yeah, if you want to hold that, we've got item, I was gonna incorporate under item HC and Town Manager's Report, we do have the representative from HD Seeger here, and we can get right into that.
Alright, great. I forgot what I was gonna say, no?
Sorry.
I had one, one more. Item on, oh, I know, it's the Communications Committee. I, I've been working on that, putting together the Communications Committee that was approved by ordinance, and so, I'll, I'm trying to come up with a number. I mean, obviously, the fire chief, police chief, you know, needs to be on it, and I, I, I don't think we should make this group too big. I think it needs to be, I don't know, maybe five or six members or so. And I have some names that I think will be good people for it, so, after our executive sessions, I thought I'd further talk about that. And that's it for the Fire Commission. Item F, Town Planning Goals Subcommittee.
The Town Planning Goals Subcommittee met yesterday. We pretty much finalized our preliminary report. We plan on sending that out to the council and hopefully put that on the agenda for the fifteenth meeting, when we can present that report. I think we're, I think we're in good shape.
Okay. Item G, Board of Education and Town Council Communications Subcommittee.
There hasn't been one during the summer, our next one is scheduled for sometime in September. We have to move the date because there's a conflict with a couple other committee meetings.
Okay, Town Managers' Report. Item A, Board of Education Administrators Collective Bargaining, September fifteenth, two thousand and fifteen.
Yeah, before we get into that, I just, I wanna go back to Town Planning Goals Subcommittee. I brought to the group meeting last night just a proposal from the Dog Park raising that issue in terms of, in the mix of things, that it's not going to interfere with any planned, you know, field use or few, you know, field development. So, that, that packet's in there, and I believe the Rec Commission, I know the Rec Commission has invited those representatives to come to their next meeting, so they can get that issue back on track, so that, that information is, you should all have a packet of that information, sort of, that's been on the back burner for the last year at least, but they essentially met their goal, the money has been raised, their ten thousand is there, it's sitting in account, actually, a little over ten thousand, and they're anxious to get that back on track. I figured it was a send, you know, referral to them to look at site selection. Fran has already, you know, kinda outlined where that property piece would be identified and begin to talk about confirming a site selection, and then talk about design and the next steps going forward, so Rec will have it at their next, next committee.
Michael, that, the funds for that, do, does the Dog Park have their own, they're handling, I guess, the funds, correct?
We, we have the funds. The funds have come, come here, there's a separate unleashed, Branford, North Branford Unleashed, yeah, and it's a separate designated fund.
Because that's confusing to me, like, why a not, a supposed nonprofit or whatever, why the town would be involved with getting involved with the funds?
I, from what I gather, just from the minutes that I've been able to research back, you know, that was the directive at the time to, to give the challenge to the group, to raise the money, and to send the money to Anthony Esposito to set up a fund. That's the way I read the, the minutes on that, back to two thousand and twelve, I believe it was.
Yeah, 'cause it's kind of, what happens if, you know, they don't go forward? Now, what do you do? What do you, yeah, like, what do you do with all those funds, you know?
Just give it back to the folks who got it.
Oh, yeah. Okay.
I thought they were close to meeting there.
They did, they did, the first-
I think it's, I think we need to discuss it at our meeting, because it really has to, we had, we didn't have a chance really, because we got it kind of at the end of the meeting. So, we need to look at that as we're looking at what we're planning.
Yeah, they've met the challenge, they met the first threshold, and council said, said that, and they met that, and that's why they're come back to, to ask what the next, next steps are, so.
I think they give it to Fran, and he builds a dog park.
Yeah. He starts clearing in the winter.
The layout. Yeah, 'cause we gotta start really looking at the layout at SWI check, because we can't just start plopping all these things down, you know? We have to have, you know, some type of plan, you know? Right now, we're putting fill in, I guess, for a football field, practice football field, and I think Little League wants another field. You know, we have a lot of property there, and if we don't plan it right, you know, we could end up, you know, hurting ourselves. And, you know, I know where I think the Potato Festival parking is, is an ideal location for a field, but I don't think they wanna give up that spot because of parking. And to me, that doesn't make a lot of sense.
Well, it's really not the Potato Fest, I mean, they're just using it because there is no field there right now, but originally, that was laid out as a practice field, and there has been discussion at the Park and Rec Commission meetings about that, and whatever is decided, if, if parking has to be moved for the Potato Fest, parking gets moved. That doesn't take precedent over our field selection, where it goes. But that's not a driving force.
Yeah. But anyway, we should start really, you know, looking at this, you know, especially if we're gonna be putting in a dog park.
I think you're talking about maybe, maybe getting a design manager at some point.
That's all part of the presentation, Maurice is gonna give in two weeks.
Maybe Yale will do it for us.
No, no, we're doing it ourselves, Al. We're not asking Yale.
Only if it has a housing component, Al.
And a gazebo.
Yes. Make sure you read the report carefully, Al.
Alright, item eight, Town Managers' Report.
Yeah, item A was the correspondence that they're set, you're set for six thirty on the fifteenth, and that is the Subcommittee or the discussion about setting up for the negotiations that you've gotta meet with the Board of Eds. So, your, your wish was to meet and piggyback on one of your meetings, so it's, that's what it's gonna be, six thirty, and I presume we're gonna, a large, larger room, to use this room to do that. Item B is the C-MED update, as the mayor said, it's a, still, it's a, it's a work progress transitioning. They, they're actually going through and implementing a new software called Mind Share, working out some of the bugs. You know, it's not a perfect system. Again, telecommunications is, you know, given the geography and so forth, they're just trying to work things out. There are some glitches, and they're working on that, and the first meeting last week was one of the new organization called, or MedCombs, what they're going by, they're gonna look at an organizational type of structure where they put together a Board of Ed, a Board of Directors, like C-MED with advisory boards, and the Board of Directors looking at the admin, but the advisory board made up of chiefs looking at the operational side. So, that's a work in progress, there'll be further meetings on that, and we can expect to see the, the first quarter billing from AMR coming out in, in October, once we've got this, this nailed down. I've included some notes of the meeting for, for C-MED in terms of trying to wind down the operation and the issue of getting the money needed for the negotiated settlement for the unfunded pension liability. So, those monies are coming in, and there was great discussion on, on getting the towns that haven't done that to send in their, their money. And so, we're, that's the first order of business in getting the pension settled, which has to be done by October. And then, the rest is just assets and how to, the last page here is what's left in the capital reserve fund and what percentage will come back to each town after all expenses, and, and all the windup is, is done, so. Inching forward.
You know, Mike, I think, no, the whole thing with MedCombs has to be watched carefully, because I've been told there are gonna be a couple entrances in this town where they haven't been able to communicate with the hospital. And in particular, with that horrific accident. It's a good thing that our own people were so good, but they could not communicate, my understanding, with the hospital when they needed to. I mean, I think we have to be careful that, you know, what we've got in ourselves, that we watch it, and that communication is an important issue.
Absolutely, and, and it is for the, the fire chiefs, if you will, I mean, even Chief Seward has said that, about the integrity of the, the process in terms of the protocols and so forth, that, that's the key issue, it's got, it's gotta work. And they've, they've gotta have oversight, and they've gotta be able to report and have a, a measurement system and, and review process to correct those. And you're right, and so, the chiefs, I know, are, are very attuned to that specific, you know, in terms of the response times, you know, make sure they, we're getting it done. Your point's well taken, absolutely. So, I'll, I'll continue to keep this on, I'll report out again at the, at the next meeting. Item C was the field use, and there's not much more, and say, Rose covered most of that, other than we are trying for next week on the ninth, if we can get everybody for that, to begin to take it to the next level and look at the proposal and address the issues. So, I'm, you know, I think most of the people at the table are excited about the, exploring the concept and see where it goes. And again, it's, it's preliminary, you know, there are other issues that, that we've gotta look at, a lot of issues that we've gotta look at, but I think it's a step in the right direction. So, I think we're gonna have the people that we need to at the table looking at that, and I'll, we can bring that back and report back at the next meeting.
Thank you, Mike.
D was the, just, I think you had asked about the DOT project, so there was some update that we had. I think Kurt might have, have some additional information as to where we are on that.
Yeah, if I could just add a couple things, I think there's something in your agenda packet, but a couple of projects, the Route one thirty-nine, Route eighty, radius, that was supposed to be, supposed to happen in July, then it got pushed out, and we're told it was September. I, I've asked the, the field representative, and he said, he'd get me something as soon as he got confirmation when Guerrero would be in. I think something, what happened is something more at the Newington level of DOT in terms of not awarding in time or authorizing, that, that sort of held it off. So, I don't have a firm date, and that's what I've been asking for from DOT, to try to make sure that happens this fall, before the winter season, that, that area's addressed. My, my thought was, you know, if Mike can, on behalf of the Town Council, send a letter to the appropriate representatives of DOT, with CCs or legislators, try to get a little push to make this happen, because it's, it should've happened a while ago, and it's, the concern is it doesn't get held up into another construction season. Because I, I was told from the field representative that because DOT at the Newington level hadn't authorized something, Guerrero got tied up another project, and as soon as they're done, they'll be over here, but-
Was that Matt Pace?
Yeah, but Matt is certainly trying to push it, but I, it's at his level, and it needs something, uh-
He had called me about, I told you about, maybe two and a half weeks ago, three weeks ago, stating that they were going to be starting, that Guerrero was finishing up another project.
Somewhere between, again, the concern is, I, and they reached out to him again this week, and, do you have a timeframe? And he, he said, let me know as soon as he had something, and he's been very good and responsive to it. But again, it's, I think, just a little push on the level at Newington-
Sure.
Doesn't hurt, I mean, that's, I was hoping to see somebody or somebody mobilize and be over there, you know, this week, but I just, he couldn't give me a date that they, that they had given him, so, anything we can do on that, I think, would help. The other one, too, is Farm River Bridge and Totugon Road into Snake Hill Road in Branford. Both of those are scheduled to be advertised next summer tentatively and constructed following in two thousand and seventeen. This is the latest I heard from DOT. The concern, I expressed, is make sure there's coordination, so that you're not tying up one of those, you know, one road becomes an alternative to the other, and it all depends on how they phase it and how they time it to make sure there's, one doesn't adversely impact the other one. They're gonna get back to me on that. I, I just got an email from today that now the both parties, the bridge people and the highway people are speaking on the two different projects, so they're both sort of different divisions, and-
It's gonna be interesting when they do Route eighty bridge and then Snake Hill, because-
It's that coordination, and once they put the temporary bridge in on Route eighty, I mean, so you should have two lanes go through, but there's impact during the construction phase, and again, we wanna make sure that there's a good way through. Either way- Either way takes traffic adequately. So latest I heard is both the design teams are supposed to be getting together and trying to coordinate that. Another thing too is when DOT gives a construction schedule, I mean, look what happened on Route 80. I mean, that should have happened 10 years ago. I don't really have a whole lot of faith that's the exact date until I see it advertised. But we're trying to coordinate that. And, and, and they are supposed to come back on the, on the bridge with the final thing to the town council. Trying to make sure that happens, you know, hopefully over the winter that there's an update on the project.
But Kurt, on the email, if I read this correctly, for the project, the Route 80 project, it says here that they think it's going to take two construction seasons?
Yeah.
But that's not what we were told.
That's not what we were told.
We were definitely were not told that it was two construction seasons.
Absolutely not. The whole idea was to condense the whole project. So yeah, I'm trying to follow up on that whole construction timeframe and sequencing. Because again, things have changed and I'm trying to make, you know, I'll, I'll try to get more information back to the council.
Yeah, I mean, before, I mean, because it doesn't pay for them to come and talk to us after they do the whole advertising and everything else.
No, no.
If everything is set.
Definitely beforehand. I mean, they're looking, again, their tentative date is sometime next summer to advertise. We want to see them over the, the winter period. I, this is what I gear them towards.
Kurt, going back to the Route 80, 139 project. I'm sure the time has run out when the contractor would have been responsible. But I've been watching it ever since they planted them. When, when you're, so if you're at the light and you're going down the hill, the side hill on the left, I don't know, maybe they planted 20 trees and 15 of them were dead from the, from day one. Or they were dead a month later. They're still dead.
Yeah.
It's really an eyesore.
Right.
And is, do the DOT inspectors ever look at what they're, I mean, you're responsible for a tree, Franny, for a year?
Yes.
So that year has come and gone. But the trees were dead before that year was up.
And I know we have a few, we pointed out.
I mean, drive down there. Look at it. They're all dead.
Right. I mean, a lot of those things we brought up to an issue, I mean, I'll have to follow up on them because we, we had a sort of preliminary walkthrough and that was the whole grading, I mean, the, the whole planting plan.
Well, that whole side hill is.
Right.
Yeah, it's an eyesore.
It's an eyesore.
I mean, it's, it's the heart of the town. And, and they started out, there was, when they came to the council, there was a nice planting plan and that was, that was the big issue that the town council really addressed on this whole thing is making sure that it looked pretty good.
That was before my time here, but I, I paid attention to that. And it's visually an eyesore. They messed up the topography of the property that we've been discussing. And the fact that the corner is the way it is boggles the mind. You know, I don't know.
It's been an issue. I mean, the, the plantings, you're right, we brought them up. And I'll follow up and just try to get an update on that, where they stand.
The timing of that traffic light actually is a question too. Because it seems to me, I spend every day in that intersection and the Route 80 traffic light seems to be green for an extensive amount of time and the 139 traffic backs up to Twin Lakes.
I, I have received complaints and I forwarded to DOT, they forwarded to traffic people and Matt Pace, I mean, the, they've been trying to.
And I kind of wonder if it's one of those, you know, an intelligent traffic light because the Route 80 stays green with very little traffic going by while traffic's backing up on 139. I don't know if we can do something about that, but.
They tried to get, someone came down from Newington and, you know, at this point on a preliminary basis said, everything's working the way it's supposed to be. Doesn't mean it's the right way. I mean, we can monitor with also the, with the police too, trying to monitor it. A lot of times there are some adjustments they make further down the road.
Yeah, I mean, I, I agree.
Yeah.
Wholeheartedly. If you're, if you're six cars back on 139 going to come out, you don't make it.
Yeah.
And it's such a big, it's such a big intersection.
And then the Route 80 side goes for, I mean, give us 30 more seconds to get out of 139.
Right.
You know?
And the people are forced now.
Route 80 side is like four minutes.
Right.
And you sit there, because I've timed it.
I have too.
And the same thing happens at Nacho Road.
And, and we get 30 seconds. Give us 30 more seconds to get out.
And it's actually a danger now because people that do that way every day, they're running the light.
They're stretching it.
They're running the light and it's going to be a hazard.
Same thing happens at Nacho 22 in the morning. The exact same thing. 80 is forever and everybody tends to run the light and do the same thing just to try to.
If you're coming up 80, turning left with the green arrow, it's the same thing though.
Well.
You're lucky if you get three cars through that arrow and it turns red.
Because it's such a wide intersection to get through.
The only thing, that is a smart arrow. If nothing's coming the other way, it turns back to green.
Yeah, it does.
But I agree, you don't get along to, sometimes that, the, the left turn is all the way down to Nacho. Because again, you're right.
In the morning, yeah.
Yeah. That light is not too smart.
No, that's bad, bad news.
So all of that work and it's worse than it was before. Pretty much.
Item E, review of town buildings status, former senior center and Augur House.
Yeah, we've got some issue, you know, in terms of buildings, but back to Dan, had some questions that we were going to defer. We do have Michelle and Scott, is it Sonberg from HD Seeger here. I know some of the issues that we had talked about with, with fire and the mayor had said that, yeah, I'm talking with the chief. Just so you know, we did look at the change in policy. The council had asked for a difference between the apparatus at, you know, regular value, market value versus replacement cost. So that was done, that is in place. The policy reflects that. It was slight premium increase, but I think a very wise decision to do that. Piggybacking on that, talking to Fran and Public Works and whether or not we should do that for some of their large expensive apparatus, we, we had thrown that to HD Seeger as well. Unfortunately, the response is there isn't a carrier that's going to, that they have found at this point that would be willing to do that. And it's just a lot has to do with in terms of the, you know, exposure, in terms of liability and potential, you know, trucks are out there all the time. So unfortunately, we can't, we've, we've hit a dead end there. But it sounds, you know, like a pretty decent idea to take a look at anyway. So we're back to, you know, firehouse and looking and the question about whether or not, you know, how, how often that's done, I'll defer to, to Scott in terms of that. But we are talking about internally, the chief wants to look at what exactly those values are, what's insured and what those values are, are they accurate? And if not, then we're going to have to, you know, fill in the gaps and make sure that, you know, we don't have, not, we're not stuck with something that's, that goes wrong and it's say, you know, it's very expensive, you know, the jaws of life tool on there and it, it's, it's not covered. So we don't want that exposure. So, you know, I defer to Scott and Michelle in terms of where they are in their, their review. Thank you for coming, Scott.
Good evening, Scott Summert from HD Seeger Insurance. Thanks for having me. With respect to building and contents, one of the things that I think is important to recognize is that how you're insured from all your locations on a blanket basis for both building and content. So you have about $120 million on a blanket basis. That really applies to any location that you have. So the accuracy issue that we're trying to figure out here is just to make sure we have appropriate contents limits for the most parts at all the locations. It is a good exercise to do routinely. You know, we talked about, geez, do we have an expensive piece of equipment at a, at a firehouse that's not been communicated to Michelle's office, was purchased, it was not, you know, not going through purchasing and then Anthony's not had an opportunity to add it to the policy. But for the most part, contents, as long as we have contents at any given location, if there's a loss at the firehouse, we're pretty much covered for a replacement value for that location. The concern I have with firehouses, and you addressed it with regard to fire apparatus, just to give you some background, we insure 70 municipalities. And a lot of the municipalities we insure with respect to fire apparatus have gone to guaranteed replacement cost on those vehicles. No one likes to replace a million dollar ladder truck, it's just a little expensive. But with respect to, you know, Franny's issue with regard to public works trucks, there's not a municipality in the state of Connecticut that's purchasing guaranteed replacement cost. One, it's not available and it's really not a cost effective way from that perspective. So there's not been a big drive amongst the marketplace to create such a product. So that's the challenge you have there. But with respect to the fire equipment, I mean, it's a great exercise to go through with respect to fire because they got some real expensive stuff and they like their, they like their toys over there. I mean, they do a great job and their stuff is pretty expensive. So we like to just take a, you know, every so often they'll send us schedules, but it's good to have a good checkup from the neck up to figure out, hey, what do we got in the toolbox? Make sure we have it all on there and make sure if it's leaving the firehouse that we're scheduling it, if it's over a certain dollar value, to ensure that if we lose it at a fire, it's, it's covered. But with respect to what's at the firehouse, if something occurs, you're pretty much okay with respect to that. So I think the exercise of going through with all the fire chiefs to determine what you have, and I'm not talking about a, you know, $1,000 wrench, which is, you know, not cheap, but that doesn't need to be scheduled. Anything that's over a certain dollar value, we like to make sure we got that on the policy to make sure that it's appropriately covered. But with respect to your property coverage, it's pretty much put together. The, both Michelle and all the departments look at a statement of values every single year, so it's not a repeated situation. Values are increased appropriately by whatever they, a Marshall Swift Beck, which is the rating system that they use for all the insurance companies to make sure values are proper. And that's what you're looking at. So, you know, we look forward to seeing what the schedules look like. And it's not, it's not a big dollar, it's not going to move the needle from a dollar perspective because we've got contents and contractors' equipment already covered with respect to the firehouses as well as Franny's place, as well as the fire department, as well as the police department, all which have their own mobile equipment stuff. But you've done a pretty good job of communicating a lot of that stuff to our, to our group.
Did I misunderstand you or did you say one of the firehouses purchased a piece of equipment and Michelle, it didn't go through her office?
No. I said that's an example. I basically said that a lot of times in municipalities, the biggest issue we have is a communication about when someone's buying something.
No, no, not what you basically said. You started your statement here tonight by saying that basically there was a problem with a fire truck at one of the houses and neither Anthony or Michelle knew about it.
Never said that. I never said that there was.
What's that?
I never said that there was, ever said that.
It was you saying it in the context of a what if, a what if.
I said, that was a what if comment.
That's why you would take an inventory. I mean, that was kind of my question, right?
That's correct.
That's why you want to take.
All right, so you didn't say that.
No, there's been no issue with respect to anything uncovered at a firehouse.
I'm glad you cleared that up. I was wondering how the heck that happened.
No, nothing.
So you're saying.
I think you'll find when we hear the tape, that was what you did say.
Make sure you call me and send me a copy.
I'll call you and send you a copy.
Absolutely.
So now here's my other thing.
Yeah.
With Franny's trucks that, you know, my new Snowfighter costs 200,000.
Right.
Ballpark.
Right.
Why wouldn't we just put collision on it?
You do put collision on it.
Oh, well then we're fine.
You are fine.
Great.
What they were looking for was a similar product to fire departments, which have a significantly higher value with some of their vehicles. And.
They're a million dollars.
They're a huge number. But with respect to the public works trucks.
So long as we have collision.
You got collision on all of it.
Now, how long do we run collision? Because you wouldn't want to run that, I mean, we certainly want to run it as long as it takes us to pay for it.
I think you continue to run it only because I'm going to tell you that there are older vehicles out there that are very expensive to replace, but not necessarily too expensive to repair.
Right.
So the idea that, you know, if you've got a frame straightening issue that costs $50,000 on an older truck, but they have not totaled it because the value might be 80, I'm sure Fran doesn't want to spend $225,000 on a new truck, he's going to want to get it fixed. So you do have appropriate limits on coverage for all of your vehicles. You know, I'm less inclined to do it on private passengers.
You want to weigh that out. I mean, if you've got a 1985 Snowfighter or whatever your oldest one is, you really don't want to be paying collision insurance on it unless it's really cheap.
Unless it's really cheap.
Right.
Which is.
Collision's normally not really cheap.
Well, on a composite rate basis based on your fleet, it's not that bad.
Not too bad.
No. I mean, I think the biggest.
You really don't wreck that many trucks.
You know what? Police cars, yeah, trucks, you know, this is historically regarding, you know, 70 towns. Very seldomly do we see a, a totaled heavy duty plow truck. They're just, they're just, they're like tanks. Guys don't mind driving them, that they're scratched up, banged up, but don't scratch a fire truck. Don't scratch that fire truck.
Well, if he scratches his truck, we leave it scratched.
Yeah, they leave them scratched. Some guys don't like scratched cars, but no, they're doing an appropriate job on insuring all those vehicles.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I guess one of my concerns was if, let's say that there's a fire there, you know, we have all the trucks, the big ones all in the garage.
Right. Well, perfect example, we had a collision, we had a, Tonnaway Plymouth had a collapse of a roof through the weight of, after snow with all new equipment in it. All those vehicles were, were covered under the, under that policy. So, you know, it's, we don't like the, I mean, companies don't like a consolidated situation involving vehicles, but yeah, you'd be provided coverage for that.
Yeah.
Not under contents, under the auto FIS, Dan.
Because our, this fleet is older, but you know, we would have to replace whatever is destroyed.
You had to replace whatever based on what the actual cash value of that vehicle is, right? Yeah.
But not replacement value though.
Not, not replacement value. So in other words, it's Franny's running around with a 25, you know, something that's got $50,000 of the value in it that's actually on a new basis because it's 15 years old.
300,000 new.
Yeah. And insurance company's not going to, they don't want, they don't take on that risk.
Right.
Because he'll be driving those things off the, off the cliff or something, you know, no driver in them.
Okay. Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Thanks for having me.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Item nine, community events and presentations. I'd just like to quickly read a card that was sent from Mrs. Esposito. And it was to the council with sincere appreciation. And it reads, you know, to the entire town council, thank you so much for such a great honor. I love this town and all of the people who live and work here. I wish I could have continued to work, however, at this time it is not possible. Love to all of you, Judy. That's a good story. Tonight, they were not able to attend, but we have two plaques for two of our public work employees that are retiring. I'd like to say thank you to Franklin Ciccarelli and Dominic Agata for many years of good service and pushing snow and cutting grass and, you know, dedicating a lot of hours to our town. And I think Fran, would you mind accepting these plaques for them and give them our sincere appreciation? How long were they here for?
One was here, one was here 28 years and one was 44.
Wow.
Ciccarelli was 44 and nothing.
Man. I would also like to thank Mr. Augur for donating a bunch of sunflowers along 22. He has 35 some odd thousand of them and people have been stopping to wonderful photo out for people. And it's just a part of, you know, beautifies the town and I appreciate it. And they're there for anybody that was nice enough to attend here that can take one home. Item 10, citizen statements, petitions and correspondence.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I'm Dudley Harrison. I live on North Street, North Branford. You know me.
I do.
My, my first thing is this Wallfield, your old Wallfield situation. I, for the life of me, don't understand why you people want to sell it to a developer and develop the thing. It's the only piece of open space we got in the center of town that could be used as That could be used as a park down the road. We have nothing till you get over here to the high school. You wanna sell some parkland, sell them, sell the park up on seventeen, you Northford people that are wanting to push in this thing. You don't care what happens in North Branford, as long as you keep your quaint little village what you want. And I'm a little fed up with this, it's just been going on for years. It, it, it's sewers up in White Hollow, very conveniently didn't pipe big enough to tie in the other streets coming down the hill. That was Northford people that was responsible for that. And I'm sick and tired of the heavyweights in Northford running the whole damn town. It's supposed to be pretty much even Steven on the council, I think it is. And, uh, but getting back to Wallfield, the old Wallfield, a lot of us grew up playing on that field, and I don't know for the life of me why you wanna sell it. They're looking for park fields and stuff now. Every meeting I go to, recreation needs another field, they need this, they need that. Well, you knock off the old center school and take that hillside down, level it out, you could put another ballfield on there. And, and what's the reasoning for selling? And you, aren't you, aren't you on this conservation commission?
No.
Land trust?
No.
Now, I catch, I, I've mistaken you, I know you're not, but, uh, I, I just don't see-
I was on economic development. When we had our discussions, when I was on economic development.
I guess maybe we've had discussions, but this is ridiculous, to sell a piece of land that could be parkland. And now, what I'm hearing, I don't hear it too well, I wish you'd get these microphones turned up so you can hear. You all look like you're telling secrets up there, to me, but, um, what was I gonna say?
Dudley, if I may, um, I've known Dudley for a long time, and, um, I've always loved seeing you in town and talking with you about whatever the issue of the day is. Maybe about two years ago, I didn't see Dudley for a while, and I, uh, went to one of your truck, tractor pulls on your property, on Rose's property. And I saw you, and I said, Dudley, you know, uh, where have you been, how have you been? And you said, "I'm not so good." And so, what's going on? And you said, "They cut down the trees." I said, "What trees have they cut down, Dudley?" You said, "They cut down the trees when they redid eighty and one thirty-nine, they cut down all those trees. They put in that gravel hillside and left it all for dead, basically." And I was like, "Well, you know, I mean, that's progress." You said, "But I planted those trees." And, um, I have never forgotten that, you know. That really, you know, I'll never forget that conversation. And it had me thinking, cause I was on, on economic development, you know, and it's about trying to figure out what's best for the town, how we can increase our tax revenue, sustain the town. So I thought about that conversation for years, you know, and, uh, I think what I've come up with is, you know, we have to make room for progress so we can sustain ourselves, we have memories which never change, pictures, um, and I have my respect for you, you know, because you were there when those trees were planted. But Wallfield is not gonna be at that, it can't be at that parcel of land. You know, we have a new Wallfield, um, it's not where you, it's not where the old field was, where you played. I don't, there's, there's nothing we can do other than just respect the fact that you were there and we can share those memories. You know, we can't, it's just the way it is.
Well, let me, let me put it this way, you've got the old IGA store, been empty for three years. You've got land around that you could develop, you could add on to that. And, and you got quite an area up there that could be developed in that one shopping center.
We don't consider that-
Never mind taking raw land, raw open space to put your stupid developments on.
Right.
Alright.
Well, the reason why the town's looking at it is because we own that land and we don't own Central Plaza, I wish we did.
Well, you know, your economic development committee, you could encourage the owner of that. I think the problem is they can't get tenants. You got a slab up here on Route eighty that is just a slab, the building collapsed in that snowstorm.
Right, right.
Nobody's putting anything on that.
But we don't own that, we have, you know, limited-
I, I know that, but on the economic development, you wanna develop these things, well, fine, develop some of these other areas. Why take a piece of open space that could be the only park in the center of North Branford? Once that's gone, North Branford's done, as far as parkland goes. What do we got down here? We gotta go all the way over to the junior high, to the schools. Northford, you got seventeen, up there on seventeen, I think you got tennis courts on it and all kinds of goodies. Plus you got the schools right in the center of town. So you wanna take it away from North Branford to one piece of land that eventually something could be done with it. Let it grow up to weeds and, and Russian hollies for now, but down the road, you're gonna want that piece of land for open space of park or whatever, there's gonna be a use for it. And I'm just sick and tired of everything getting shoved over this set. Sewers, gas, everything goes into North Branford, develop North Branford, keep Northford, it's a quaint little city.
I understand.
No, take it that way, don't sell. And besides that, now, what I'm hearing tonight, this developer is coming up with his own ideas. He, he's not gonna do what you wanted him to do in the first place, that, that just showed tonight. And you gotta watch these guys.
Tell me he told me so.
Huh?
But I would never say that.
No, but you gotta watch these guys, these guys are gonna put in what they can put in, whether you like it or not. And the town of North Branford's gonna wind up with something we didn't even want, or you didn't even want.
Well, and that's not what I want.
I, I'd send them packing, myself.
Yep.
So, let's consider keeping that as open space right now. Maybe we don't wanna put the money into developing it, but let's not sell it.
I agree, we, we want to do what best is in the best interest of the town.
Well, that's in the best interest, in my opinion, okay? Thank you.
Thank you, Dudley.
Nancy Cloud, Twenty Village Street, Northford. I just want the council to know that I object to the public land as being considered for private for profit use, referring to the ballfields, but more importantly, the artificial turf causing cancer in our kids. We need lots more environmental input into the September ninth meeting. And also, I would like to know what efforts are going to be made to see how the citizens of the town feel about their proposed public-private relationship to these town fields. And who can go to this September ninth meeting and have their input, and has the environment been addressed? I guess that's my statement.
Thank you.
Fran Lescovich in Auger Road Extension in Northford. Um, I have a question about, um, the price that is on the budget for, um, it's as an asset of Wallfield. I did talk to Mike today, and he told me that the selling price, or the proposed selling price on the market value was something like eight hundred thousand, and that this was the new field that was, um, the, the asset was one point three million dollars. Now, on your, um, on page one fifty-seven, you mark it as a, um, a sale of town property. And then on page one forty-nine, you state that the redevelopment cost of fifteen ninety-nine Foxon Road, which is the old Wallfield, property being changed to this fund based on the premise that if and when it is the property sold, the proceeds will follow through this fund, et cetera, et cetera. So, what's on the budget, is it the asset of the old field, or is it the asset of the new field?
I'm, I'm not, again, I'm not clear as to, in terms of following your, your notion, the, the market value in terms of the study for the-
Yes, you told me that it was-
About eight hundred thousand, yeah. What we're carrying is, I think you're referring to the, what we, what we spent, or what it would cost us to, to build Wallfield, which I wasn't here, but I'm told was a million plus.
You also stated that this is the fifteen ninety-nine Foxon Road, that's the old Wallfield, Wallfield.
Right.
So which are we talking about? You talk about a possible, uh, sale for one point three million, and then you state that it's fifteen ninety-nine Foxon Road. I'm just concerned about which one it is.
The fifteen ninety-nine is, has, is, is just got a market value right now, and what we sell it for potentially.
Is it one point three million?
It could, I mean, the, the developers are offering a million.
Yeah, only if we sell it and we pick up all the costs of any kind of cleanup there is.
Right.
Which kind of, to me, is a foolish thing. But anyhow, so it is the old field, not the new field, as you told me.
Well, I, I wasn't sure what you were referring to, but if you're talking about the development, yeah, it's, it's, it's market value is eight hundred, give or take. It is, I forget with the report, eight hundred and fifty thousand, and the developer proposal was a million dollar offer.
But why are we only thinking a market value of eight hundred when you're saying that it's worth one point three? It's an asset to the town of one point three.
No.
Can I just get a number of the budget, just as a thanks holder?
Oh, really? Okay.
It's capital budget fund, it's not, it's not an adopted budget, it's a number that's put in there as a-
The budget was, was published and voted on, so-
Yeah, general one is voted on, those capital budgets are just a information purpose, not a data basis.
Okay.
Trying the other public comment.
Sal Candolor, representing the Connecticut Sports, Sports Box. A comment was just made, and that's the only reason I step into the microphone, that, um, turf causes cancer. There is, there has been over fifty studies done in the United States from New York to California. The latest one that I know of was done at UConn, and they, they even came and checked our fields. And, uh, no study to date has found anything that creates a health hazard. So having said that, unless someone can bring it to my attention and our attention that there's something to do with cancer that, uh, the turf causes, um, it's, it's a no, it's a no discussion. The second thing I wanted to mention is that our complex does not need to use our town fields. So, we use them now, and we use them because we allow the town programs to use our fields. So it's a swap-out. We try and do as much as we can for our towns. Little League, football, soccer, lacrosse, baseball, all of them. I'm not asking for anything that, that, I'm not looking to, to take anything from the town, I'm looking to give to the town. So, I can go to East Haven, New Haven, Wallingford, I can use any fields anywhere. I don't need our fields. If we have this group that is gonna come out in opposition just because they wanna fight, I can withdraw my offer today and still succeed going elsewhere. So, if that's what this group wants, then by all means, let me know. Thank you.
Thank you. Alright. Resignations and appointments. Having none, item twelve, unfinished business, discussion and action. Item A, updates to the defined benefit plan.
No.
You wanna take your brawl to the hallway?
No.
Excuse us.
Folks, please step out, please. Pardon us.
Pardon us, we're trying to have a meeting. Ms. Cloud, if you wanna go in the hallway and take this, and to Mr. Candolor, you could take it out in the hallway. Everybody was respectful when you spoke.
Nothing on, nothing on twelve A.
Nothing? Item B, resolution to adopt proposed ordinance two thousand fifteen dash two, amending chapter one ninety-three, solid waste.
That's still, still a work in progress.
Item C, discussion of bond expenditures, possible ballot question.
Yeah, that was a carryover from last couple of meetings and, uh, I'd asked Lisa to be here as well, just to, you know, it's not a, it's not an option to put that question on, is, is, but there are, there are other options that the council can pursue, so I don't know if you have any questions for, for Lisa, or, or what that would look like, but, uh, she's here tonight to kind of explain.
Could you explain our options to us, Lisa? Sure. My name is Lisa Valenti, I'm the town clerk for North Branford. Basically, you're trying to solicit input from the public. I believe that's what I was told. Is that correct?
Correct.
Yeah.
That's your goal, right.
On large bonding issues.
Right, so you have other options, you can have a survey, you can mail out a survey, you can have public hearings, you can have informational meetings, you can do an online survey. There are other ways to achieve that same goal. In Connecticut, you can't put just any question on the ballot, which is called the referendum. There has to be a specific law in the statute or in our town charter to allow that. Yeah, okay, that's-
So we could do charter revision if we wanted to?
Correct, that's, that's a law. Absolutely.
Lisa, aside from pointing out our options, you're not, are you suggesting that there is, other than that you need to do charter revision, are you suggesting that in your opinion there's some detriment to soliciting public referendum or putting out a public referendum on a capital expenditure?
No, 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 I'm suggesting that the question that you wanted to place on this year's election, there's no law that enables you to do that. That's why I'm giving you other options to-
We can't put a question on the ballot asking the public if they want to support charter revision that would permit referendums for substantial capital expenditures.
Correct.
We cannot do that.
Not that type of a question.
How would that be-
There are specific topics that you're allowed to put on an election ballot, or on a, or a regular referendum. You have to cite, in other words, if you were to do that, that's fine. What you would do is submit that, you would approve a question, this is the process. You would approve the question that you would like to put on the ballot, you would submit it to me, I have to make sure it has a shall in the beginning, a question mark at the end, it's a yes and no question, and then you would give me the law that enables you to put that question on the ballot. It would be, either come from the state statute or a town charter. So what I'm saying is if you're trying to solicit input from the public, which is what I believe that question is doing, you wanna find out if there's interest, you want public input. There are other avenues to pursue to achieve that same goal.
But in the vein of what you just said, start with a shall, end with a question mark, and cite some legal basis for the question.
Some law that enables that question, yes.
The question, paraphrase, I don't have exactly, but with a question, shall the town conduct charter or convene a charter revision commission for the purpose of considering allowing the citizens to vote at referendum on capital expenditures in excess of X dollars? Question mark. Does that work for you?
No, it's the subject matter that you don't, that, there's no enabling legislation that allows that type of question.
The subject matter is, shall the town convene a charter revision commission?
No, 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 you, you didn't ask that, you can do charter revision, and once you do, you, you can put a charter revision commission into play and revise the charter.
And then identify that question.
That question, right, when you have to amend our charter, there has to be a section of our charter you're amending, whether you're adding something to the charter or not, you wanna know if the public would like that.
Right, yes.
So, the way to do that is not by putting that question on the election, you're, there's no state law or charter provision in our, in our town charter that allows you to put that type of question on the ballot.
You're a main town clerk, you know that.
I'm sorry.
But you know what, Joe-
You know what, I'm just telling you, you could do that, and I could get, and, and then I'd have to send it to the secretary of state's office, and it wouldn't be approved. So I'm just giving you other avenues to pursue if you still like the input.
I believe that the next council is gonna have to, you know, and the council can do it on their own, but I think, you know, with, there's questions around town about the form of government. I believe there's a strong question around town about bonding, only because of how far in debt we are for capital. And I personally want- And I personally want to see us look at, and I actually had called and asked Lisa about this too. I'm actually disgusted with our, with our current, our current form, or our current numbers, or whatever, that we have three people running for the Board of Education unopposed. And I've been involved in the government a long time here, and that happens a lot. And so what that tells is, the electorate has no choice. You don't have a choice, you know? And that's what elections are about, not to go and vote for somebody who has nobody running against them. So your only choice is you either vote for them or you don't. But they won already, they've already won. So what I, and what I asked Lisa is, I'm like, why does, why is the Board of Ed not like the council? And the answer came back that it doesn't have to be. That's the way, years ago, it was written, but we don't have to have it running this way. So if we ran a full Board of Ed, just like we run a full council, then both parties would be running people against each other, and every four years, or two years, or three years, or whatever charter revision came up with, you could run, you would have, you would have a choice. Because right now, to have three people out of seven people running unopposed is ridiculous, you know? You, you, you don't have a choice. If, if the whole town didn't like these three people, there's nothing we can do about it. So in my mind, you know, we, you know, if I'm sitting here, I'm going to look to open up charter revision, and I did ask Lisa, and, and she could talk to that, but she did, she did answer it and say that it would take us two election terms to do that. We would run these people, and then in two years, you'd run...
Why two?
Well, they have a four-year, what, what happens is, what he's talking about is getting rid of the staggered terms. Do we have to run the Board of Education in staggered terms? And no, you do not. But there's also provision, provision in the statutes that you don't kick the people off who are already on.
Right.
So the, the current three that are running, we, our, our Board of Education have four year terms. So let's say you invoked a charter revision commission, and they decided, no, we want seven members to run, just like the council, seven members at large, without the staggered terms. What you would do is, the, the four that are already seated, you would run for a two-year term to catch up to the end of this term, so that you would then run everyone at the same time.
So the only question that we have to ask on a ballot is, should we enter into a charter revision?
We can't.
You can't.
That's what she just said.
We don't ask that.
I'm so sorry, but you can't ask that question.
The council goes into charter revision.
You can ask the public that in a different way, is what I'm telling you. It doesn't go on the ballot.
We can, we can set a charter revision commission.
Yes.
And then we can consider these issues.
Correct.
When that commission is set up, Lisa's not going to let us do it on the ballot.
Not me, the state law, this, I'm just telling you, we can submit it to the Secretary of State's office, and it wouldn't get approved, so...
Joe's just mad because it was his idea, and it was a very good idea. It's just against the law.
No, but you can still get your answer, you just have to do it another way.
I was going to go along with that.
Right.
Okay.
And Al, to further your point...
I'm sorry, Joe.
We may look at going to five members versus the seven.
Well, right, you, you know, if you, well, with charter revision, the council doesn't tell them what to look at. We could give them a task, but they'd look at the whole charter.
Right. Because we had charter revision, and we increased it by one, which we wanted a not number, but we really should have went the other way.
Well, where it's hard to get people to run.
Well, that's, that's just it.
You know?
Right.
I mean, some of them are running unopposed because there's nobody to run against.
It's, it's true, it really is, it's a coronation, it's not an election.
Right.
Right, it makes no sense.
So if we have a chance, opportunity, or if the townspeople have the opportunity to vote on some changes to the charter to correct that, I think that we should offer that to them.
Okay.
Yep.
Thanks.
Lisa, thank you.
So I guess that can now come off the unfinished business thing, because we now finished it.
We're done.
Item thirteen, new business.
We did nothing with it.
Discussion in action. Award of the RFP, number one, two thousand and fifteen, two thousand and sixteen, engineering services, to prepare preliminary and final design documents for the reconstruction of selected roads. Before we get started, I just want to comment, I think that Kurt, Fran, you guys did an excellent job putting together that RFP. Al and I were there interviewing, and, you know, I think you guys did a really good job.
All right, just in, in summary, we put out the RFP for engineering services for the, basically the Birdland area, for the drainage improvements and the reconstruction of the roads. We received eleven proposals, we shortlisted it to, we interviewed the five firms on the panel, again, as Mayor Candelora said, was Mayor Candelora, Al Rose, Mike Paulus, Fran and myself. We sat to interviews last week, looked at the firms in terms of qualifications of individuals, the sculpt that they provided, and the overall presentation, knowledge of the project, and it basically was a unanimous decision to recommend Malone and McBroom of Cheshire, Connecticut, to perform the engineering services for the reconstruction project. That would be, if you authorize the, the selection of Malone and McBroom, that would be subject to entering an agreement, being signed by the town manager, and asked approved by the town attorney for those services. They did give us basically fees for the scope that we talked about. We'd have to nail down, because we wrote up a proposal, what we felt was the required work, it could be a few tweaks to the overall scope based upon, there were some good comments from the engineer, and, and again, how we pay for things, we, they gave us an overall fees for certain items, so we can, based upon their comments, whether they're lump sum fee, we can do an hourly fee, which I think is sort of probably the recommendation on a couple of the items. We'd have to finalize a, a, a contract, again, meeting the, the approval of town attorney to go ahead with it. Time wise, I mean, the goal is to get this going pretty soon to shoot for a next advertising, late winter, early spring, so we can take advantage of next year's construction season. Couple of things that came up, it may be one contract, two contracts, we're not sure, you know, that, this is something that will come out during the, the final design, how many contracts for the actual work, whether we deal with one contractor, or, or, or two contractors. But that, that's part of the design process, and that would be included in the dress and the contract with the engineer.
So the only thing that I would add to that, Kurt, is if, if we vote on this tonight, and then we enter into negotiation, we would want to, in that negotiation, we want to make sure that they had whatever we were going to put out the bid next year, ready to go out in the month of March, not, 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 not April first, you know, we got to, I think that we need to get out the summer work, you know, early, and that we need to make that a stipulation.
And that was part of the discussion during the, the interview process, in terms of trying to make sure that, you know, we, we got the work done. Again, the unknown is, I mean, we, we have, we have a budget, you know, the other thing that might come up is, there's a few more problems out there than we anticipated, you know, that may drive the overall cost up a bit, then we, it comes back to the council, we have decisions to make, do we, we have a budget of about two million dollars, if it's, if it's three million dollars, what do we do? Do we, do we do part of it and then, and face this in? Do we do it, the bonding money there, do we move some money around from there? But this is part of the process, between the engineer and the town council, myself, in terms of trying to move this forward. Like I said, it, it's a budget based upon the best, you know, we, we put our best foot forward in terms of coming up with it, with the cost. But again, there, there may be a little more there, we may be fine, we just don't know that until we get to the final decision.
Kurt, how do we reconcile the discrepancy in costs and the bids that came in, they're all over the place?
Again, I'm going to go back to, we asked for proposals, because we wanted to look at scope, qualifications, and the like. It's not a commodity, per se, it's, it's a professional service.
I actually wanted to speak to that, I was going to.
Okay.
I wanted to be clear to the council and to the town, so you're absolutely right, the, and I'm going to just use round numbers, so I'm going to say that the bids came in, the...
Proposal.
RFP proposals came in from fifty-four thousand to four hundred and fifty thousand. So this is an engineering firms, looking at the same RFP. So in our, the, you know, the, the committee that interviewed the five firms, and we interviewed the five lowest firms. And, you know, for me, and unanimously with the committee, we felt that the lower ones did not have, or at least I felt, they didn't have an understanding of what the RFP was asking for, and not, not, and then, you know, the numbers that they were putting on stuff just, just didn't make sense. And, and then some of the things that the other firms were proposing weren't included. Some of them argued that they didn't think they needed to be included, but, you know, we, we spent over five hours listening to all the firms, and, and looking at, you know, what, what we were asking to have done, and that's why we came up with these guys.
If I remember correctly, there were a couple that were real low, and a couple that were real high, and then there was a couple that, that were pretty much within, within twenty, ten, fifteen, twenty thousand. So Malone and McBroom was in that middle group.
Right.
Okay. Because there's no, there's no cost, like, their figure is not in this motion.
And again, their, their total for the items as submitted was, I believe it was a hundred and forty-nine thousand dollars, and plus resident inspection, that was an hourly basis. The one thing we may be able to do, and this is part of the interview process, the selection process, we can nail down a scope, and came out, you know, during the discussion, this, they may be able to modify the scope, they submitted a detailed scope in, in their proposal based upon RFP, based upon, they have some recommendations that, oh, there's, there's ways to possibly save some money on the design end. And that's the final scope that has to, or the final contract that would have to be put together to nail that down. But we asked for, the reason why we asked for fees was to get an idea if people, where they were in the range, and we don't want to be talking to somebody at the three hundred thousand, four hundred thousand range, they're obviously looking at something totally different than, than what we talked about. And that's always the hard thing, professional services, we try to describe the scope as best we can. Engineer, you know, professional services, they come back, well, there's, maybe there's a little way to do it, that we can tweak it, and we can get a better product for, for a better price. But it gave us a baseline to work with, to sort of see where everybody was in the overall process. I mean, I'm hoping when we, we file it up, you know, if we tweak it, and, and we ask for certain things, and it may come back, you know, the recommendation, we can do it a little bit, you know, we can modify it a little bit, and eliminate a little of that, the, the actual dollars may be slightly less. Again, it, it's not like we're saying, you know, when, when you're building a roof, or, you know, the, this is the material, this is the standard it has to be built to, it's a professional services, it certainly is, there's a lot of value to, the, what goes in the engineering can result in a significant saving, or a better product in the final round.
And the other thing that went into it is, these firms came in with, just about all of them came in with, you know, either by name, or they were in the room on who their onsite inspector was going to be.
Right.
And by far, we've got a, I think these guys have the best guy to watch the job for the town.
Right.
And the other recommendation that the council would want to make down the road is that they're there full time. You know, we can't be, we can't have a, have, have the guy stop out occasionally and see what they've done. There's too much stuff going on up there with, with, you know, groundwater, and, I mean, like, some of the firms came in and, and were very hopeful that, hey, maybe the ground's all sandy gravel up there, and, and, you know, we just have to mill an overlay. And you know what, for any firm that had done their homework, they would have known this in the White Hollow Sewer District that was mandated by the state, because the groundwater is so high. And if the groundwater is high in everybody's lawn, it's high in the road too. And that's what the problem is with those roads. So, so we had to kind of come up with a, who had the best understanding of the area, and how they were going to proceed with, with going through it, so...
And Al, not to interrupt you, but what I was impressed with, they actually watched the weather to see when there would be a significant rainstorm, and they took the time to go up there.
Go out and look at it.
Yeah, that's due diligence right there. Well, yeah, and they did, they did it more than once, you know, and, you know, I was impressed by that, they really did their homework. And if I remember correctly, they had their own in-house surveyor, which was another, I think, important...
Yeah, they're, they're very good, very reputable firm.
Right.
They have a very good reputation.
Right. Yeah, we were, and, you know, it was funny, at the end, you know, nobody said anything, and pretty much, we all had the same...
You're right out of the gate, they were everybody's number one.
Yeah.
Again, there is a sec, there is a...
Just a motion. Thank you, Kurt.
I would like to make a motion that the North Branford Town Council authorizes Michael T. Paulus, Town Manager, to award work for engineering services in response to RFP number one dash two oh five slash two thousand and sixteen to Malone and McBroom of Cheshire, Connecticut, and authorizes Michael T. Paulus to enter into an agreement with Malone and McBroom for said services, subject to review and approval of said agreement by the town attorney.
Second.
Okay. Moved by Counselor Angeloni, seconded by Counselor Fuzi. Roll call.
Mayor Candelora?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor, one more?
Yes.
Counselor Angeloni?
Yes.
Counselor Arndt?
Yes.
Counselor Diamond?
Yes.
Counselor Potter?
Yes.
Counselor PC?
Yes.
Counselor Rose?
Yes. I would just ask Michael that, you know, when you guys come to terms, and John has read this thing, that it comes across at our desk here before we sign it, we used to do stuff that way, and I think it works pretty good. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Item B, Connecticut Integrated Vehicle and Licensing System.
Good evening, this is just an update that, just wanted to get in front of this with you folks, there might have been some calls placed, as part of, there's a lot of notoriety about the DMV licensing changes that have gone through in the last month or so. And one of the changes that have occurred is this Civils program, Connecticut Integrated Vehicle and Licensing System. And how it impacts us locally is, historically, we would wait till the second payment cycle was completed, so say February, and if people did not pay their taxes on their cars, they were called, put on, they were put on the naughty list, if you will, at DMV. That when you went to register your car, a flag would come up and say, hey, you owe North Branford taxes, take care of that before you register the car. Also, as part of that process, that previously was approved by the council, you see the minutes attached there from two thousand and thirteen, it was a five dollar charge we were able to add on to that delinquent taxpayer. It was to recoup costs that we were being charged by DMV at that time, roughly about thirty-five hundred dollars a year. Under this new Civils program, what the DMV has concluded is that the day after the first payment was due, if you didn't pay your taxes, you were delinquent, and you were on the naughty list immediately. And so we had folks who would come in, and maybe a week after the payment date, and went to register a car, and the flag was up saying, you can't register your car, because North Branford's saying you have back taxes, or you owe taxes. And the five dollars was an immediate thing at that point as well. So it did raise some concern in the tax office, there were people complaining, so I mentioned it to Mike, and I figured I'd want to get it to you guys, in case you hear from folks, you know, why all of a sudden they're on the naughty list immediately. Another change that's happened is, if you were on the naughty list before, you came into the office with your bill, and you got a stamp, you took that stamp to DMV, and it showed you paid your taxes, it was a special stamp, the town had, all the towns had the same stamp. town had, all the towns had the same stamp. That's going away October first. Now what's gonna happen is, if you come in and rectify your, your balance, we have to go onto the computer system, the state system, and manually take you off the system.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. And as I mentioned in there, there are some towns that are charging for that. One, I think it was in Norwalk, we found, is charging twenty-five dollars, because you basically have to stop what you're doing, log into the system, and say, okay, Dan Arman paid his taxes, he's no longer on the naughty list. If you read this Civils thing even further, what they want you to do is they're trying to entice you to allow people to register in town. They want you to have a one-stop experience, where a person can come in, if they're delinquent, pay their taxes, and you register, therefore you go online and do the registration for them, as if you're doing DMV work. So I guess the, the underlying root of this Civils program is they're trying to get people to pay their taxes sooner, which, oh, well and good, we just finished the numbers last year, we're about ninety-eight point eight on our taxes, going back to your comments about people paying taxes as well. So people pay their taxes well, things are working well. As I mentioned, the bottom line of this is, you know, if you look at between the assessor's office and the tax office, about eighty percent of our time is spent chasing twenty percent of the dollars. It's ridiculous.
One point two percent.
It's nuts. It's absolutely nuts. I wish they would take the whole thing over. You know, it, it'd be worth for them to take the program over. So I just wanted to bring this in front of you, there's still, you know, there's still changes being made to this whole process, as far as, is the five-dollar fee gonna be waived maybe in the future, so maybe now there is, as part of this process to make it more palatable, to waive the five-dollar add-on surcharge, there's still a lot of balls up in the air. I wanted to bring in information that we had up to today, and in case anybody contacted you saying, hey, I'm on the naughty list, so immediately what happened, all of a sudden, it was a change due to this new, this new DMV work that they're putting in place.
If people are gonna be delinquent immediately.
Right.
Then, and we were paying thirty-five-hundred dollars a year, but delinquencies act, were not immediate, are we gonna end up paying more now?
Well, part of the pro, they, they may waive that, that charge to the town.
If we do it all.
If we do it in town here. So it's, it's still, it's, it's like a, the Affordable Care Act, it's still being written as you go kind of thing, and we're fortunate that our software provider has the, the program in place to put these people on, a mask put on, it's called. Another vendor, that's a larger vendor in, in the state, didn't have the program in place, so there, those towns were in, having an issue because they didn't comply with the new law.
But do we have the staff in to handle that? I mean, do, do they have the time to?
Well, yeah, it's, it's gonna be an issue, because you're gonna basically have to take the three people that work there, they all, they all have IDs now in the Civil system, they all have the ability to go on, so if you come in and you say, I gotta register my car, I'm on my way to DMV, take me off the naughty list, you have to be able to go into the system and take Dan Arman off the naughty list, right then and there. And again, there's a, there's a fee associated with that, some charger, some towns are charging for that convenience of stopping what they're doing, logging in, and taking you off. We haven't gotten to that point yet, but we're trying to throw it out there as far as what, what's being.
Well, if we can prevent people from having to go to DMV, if we can do it all one-stop right here.
Right, well.
And charge people twenty-five bucks, probably well worth, I'd pay more than having to pay twenty-five bucks.
The aggravation factor alone, right?
Absolutely.
And that's, in, in the past, what people would do is, it's kind of a, you know, an interesting topic you bring up, is they'd go to DMV, the flag would pop up saying.
They'd come back town hall.
They'd come back, and then if they wanted an immediate stamp, they gotta have cash. Then they'd have to go find an ATM, come back with cash, they're running back and forth seven times.
Then go back to DMV.
They'd go back to DMV.
And then it didn't catch up, and it never caught up.
Right. So I just wanted to bring it to, you know, where we are now with this, it's subject to change, they're still working on the regulations and stuff, but in case you hear from people that may have contacted you saying, you know, why'd they bang me the five-dollar fee and I'm on the naughty list, it's out of our control.
The mean town.
The mean town. No, 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 I always fight for the residents, so I'm sorry, so I'll play the devil's, the devil's advocate on this one, because I don't agree with this. Because if you allow people to pay it in two installments, why are they being put on your naughty list, and why aren't the towns fighting the state of Connecticut? Because what does the state of Connecticut care?
Well, because they want to close down the DM, they want to reduce staffing at DMV.
I know, the registration, no, no, but, 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 no, 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 but the money is always to the, the tax collector's offices, they're collecting the two payments. It's the state telling you, if you, even if you towns want to allow two payments, three payments, four payments, we don't care. Well, why should they even get involved in that fight? I don't think it's fair to the taxpayers. So is there any, do we have any?
Recourse?
Recourse.
How do we found yet, huh?
I mean, that's why they were trying to do away altogether, right, with the, uh, the.
You know, it's all online, and when they're trying to reduce their staff, and you say, streamline their operation, kick it back to us to do here.
That's not straight, paying taxes has nothing to do with the state of Connecticut.
Right.
I'm sorry.
It's, it's their way to put the hammer down and say, you want to register your car, pay your taxes.
Right.
It has, again, it has nothing to do with that.
Yeah, you're right.
If they're not delinquent, it has nothing to do, I don't know.
Right.
I, I say, isn't there some way we can talk to DMV, I, I think that's crazy.
But offering, the question though is offering, you know, the taxpayers an option of doing it here, though. Regardless, I mean, we're never gonna, how are we gonna change that?
Yeah, it's gonna make it more difficult, we have trouble now communicating with DMV.
And, and, right. So giving us an option to take care of it here is worth looking at, right?
He's not there.
And if they can't, if we can't bring a stamp receipt to DMV, we're relying on a system that's years behind, you know, so out, it takes such a long time for that to update. Probably don't even have a choice but to offer that.
I know.
So I'm moving in the right direction there.
You still have to miss.
Well, I'm just watching what's going on. I'm just kinda watching, it's interesting, right? Review of policy for placing memorials and monuments on town property.
So I asked Anthony to put this on, but I didn't really want it as a, I'm not sure I wanted it as a policy, because I don't think we have one or need one. What we do have is, the town attorney has ruled for twenty-five years, because I've been asking the question, that the only board that can name a town-owned property is this town council, uh, is the town council, not this town council. So in, in, uh, you know, the last time I, you know, talked to Michael about saying we need to send a letter out, so I wanted to, I wanted to have a little discussion about what that letter should say, and that it should go to everybody. And, you know, I don't wanna, you know, I, I don't want to pick on anybody that had a, you know, tragedy in their life, you know, most families have a tragedy in their life at one time or another. I don't want to pick on a volunteer that the little group around the volunteer feels they should name something after them. So I'm gonna make up a game, we'll call it Pickleball. So Town North Branford has one pickleball field, and some little kid tragically died. So the group involved in pickleball, on their own, names that field. So we fast forward four or five years, and two little kids that play pickleball are tragically, you know, passed away. So now, we can't name the pickleball field after them because it's already done. So, you know, I've been involved in when Dr. Mulrain died and, and they wanted to name a school after him, and a knee-jerk reaction. You know, this town's been around here, and I'm trying to find out exactly when, but, you know, sometime in the mid-sixteen hundreds, at least that's when my family came here. We don't have enough land for every person that dies to put in a monument, put a memorial, or name something after them. And as a town council, and I think that's why whoever was involved in, in writing that, you know, we have to set the emotions aside and look at, we're a town. And, you know, in most cases, five years from now, right, you know what, we'll go into a high school. Four years from now, the incoming, you know, everybody in the high school may not know whoever something was named after in that high school. And not saying that it, you know, if we had enough fields, let's name them for everybody that dies, but we don't. And it's, um, it's, it's something that, it just seems to be running rampant now. And, and there's a lot of them. I know that Public Works has issues with some of them, when they have to plow snow, and, you know, it's like, oh my God, they went on a monument, or a memorial, or a tree. So I agree, I think that Michael needs to send a letter out to everybody. I think that needs to go to the superintendent of schools, and we can't trust him to pass it on, it needs to go to the principals, it needs to go to coaches, it needs to go to Little League, it needs to go to basketball, it needs to go to football, and pickleball. And it needs to say that, you know, hey, you know, folks, time out here, you know, if something happens and you want to name the field, or the building, um, right down to, I've had people call me about, over at the Historical Society, there's some kind of agricultural memorial by somebody, and not memorial, an agricultural museum named after a guy. Now, again, I'm not sure, and I told the guy, I said, I'm not sure whether, I believe the town owns the Reynolds Beer property, but, and if they do, there really can't be a museum over there named after somebody unless it, in my mind, unless it came before this board. I mean, you know, we have people that ask to do things right, we have people that, you know, people that follow the proper channels, and most of them get denied. We had somebody that wanted to put a clock in town in memory of somebody, and we didn't do that. We had, you know, we did have, and I go back to, I was on the council, the young lady that came and wanted to build the monument over there by the, you know, on, uh, where the fields, Colter Field or whatever over there, and you know what, she did it right, she got permission from the council, she went out and raised the money herself, and two years later was back with enough money to get the thing built. And, and so, so we have one legal memorial and monument in town and fifty others. And I think that, um, that, you know, the message isn't out there. So I think that Michael needs to draft a letter to these people, to, to all the powers that be, that says, look, we can't have this, because we may want to move a field, we may want to move a school, we may want to knock a building down, and if it has somebody's name on it, the family involved in that name is gonna be hurt and thinks that, oh man, this is a memorial to my pickleball star, and we just, you know, so now we can't move it. And so I think that it has to be a firm letter that lets everybody, puts everybody on notice that says that any and all monuments, museums, anything named on town property, memorials that are, have not come before the town council, are deemed subject to removal. And by saying deemed subject to removal, that doesn't mean that you're going to remove it.
Or review.
But it gives you the ability to remove it if we need to add on to the parking lot or change the road, and all that stuff where you could at least hang your hat on and say, well, you know what, we don't know how this got here anyway, but.
You're saying you don't want it to be, you don't want it to go out as a policy? So what's?
I don't want it as a policy, I want a letter.
Okay, but so is it, is it in the charter, I mean, what, so you're saying?
I don't know, that's him.
I think I, uh, I think I rendered a legal opinion about thirty years ago.
Oh, I wasn't around then.
Yeah.
Wow. You're a newcomer.
And, and it involved a super, a superintendent who regretfully passed away, and the board of Ed, um, uh, unilateral, unilaterally proposed to, I believe it was.
Name a school.
And unfortunately, I rendered the opinion, I'd be happy to, you know, give it to Michael, and I can be the bad guy, and send copies to the council as well. That's the most definitive statement I think I made with regard to this very uncomfortable subject.
And it is an uncomfortable subject, but I think that it needs to be addressed, because it, you know, around town, there's a lot of them going on.
The, the bottom line is, it all boils down to the property issue. If the town council owns the property, what Al is saying is that if you want to put something of yours on our property, um, then you should rightfully come before us. And, you know, uh, it really boils down to that, if somebody wanted to put a piece of, if somebody wanted to put a stone, or a cross, or some memento on your property, you would be very concerned without having given your permission. And I think, you know, when the town council talks, we're talking in front of the entire town.
So it's basically then it's because it's town property, that's, it's not the charter thing, it's not a.
Yeah, I, I think that's what I understand Al to be saying. And, and of course, without that understanding, a lot of wires get crossed. You have a lot of people who have different names, but probably, possibly the same subject. And, and, and you don't want families to be disturbed, or, or, as Al said, hurt. You don't want people to feel also that they may over time develop some sort of entitlement or legal right, and, you know, then it gets into a different, then we have, you know, possibly groups in town supporting one name and all that business. So I think the bottom line is, it's really very straightforward, it's, it's the town's property, if someone wants to have some amount of use of it, uh, that they simply present that to the town council.
And Marie, I'll go further, because you know me, I'll stick my neck out.
You know what, because it came up.
I'll stick my neck out and say, and, and say, there's not one person, child, volunteer, schoolteacher, that's more important than the next, and it actually hurts the next or the one before, when somebody that, you know, somehow gets a small group in town to let them do something that they have no right to do. And that's why we need to get it clear out there.
Well, the message has to get to everyone then. And, you know, something came up.
Did I say to everybody?
Okay, something came up at our meeting the other day about a piece of property, correct me if I'm wrong, because it was donated to the town with the understanding that there would be a bench.
Oh, yeah, the Mooney property, which.
The Mooney property.
Which is across the field from Swiatek, which, I didn't know that was.
It was donated with the understanding that there'd be a bench in memory of the wife, I think. What do you do with things like that?
Well, you would need to see that document.
Well, yes, in the agreement.
It has to be in an agreement.
But that obviously, that must have been accepted at some point then.
That's correct, so show us the document.
I don't have the doc, I was just told that's what.
Tell the people who is asking you, telling you this, to come up with a document.
John, anybody that donates a gift, doesn't the town council have to accept it?
Yes, yes, and if they, and if a gift has conditions to it that are unacceptable to the town, it may very well result in.
Well, I'll have to do some research to find that out.
And, and believe me, I'll be, I'll build the bench with you. If you can, if there's a bench that was supposed to be built.
I'll have to do some research.
I think then we should follow through on it. The deal's a deal.
I, I know of two sales agreements that we had with property, that that was the condition of the sale of the property.
So obviously it must have been accepted by a town council.
Yes.
Right?
Yes.
And then, then the next town council should be made aware of it, so they can follow through on it.
Well, there goes to your point. And the other thing, towns are forever, you know, twenty years.
Well, that's the thing. And you just don't have enough things to name.
Okay, but then I think it should even be in like the Trotec Times or something too, because there are so many groups out there, you could miss one of them.
Yeah.
There's so many, like, you know, a group gets organized because of some.
Almost like a legal notice.
Yeah, you almost have to have something, so everybody gets that message, not just letters, but everybody in town needs to understand that.
And I'm not saying that, you know, and I'm not advocating that, okay, we're gonna go out and start taking out a tree, but what I'm saying is, everyone's gonna be made aware, so if the town council didn't put it there, it's subject to be removed. And then if the town has to build a new school, or add a parking lot, or move a ballfield, they don't have to worry about this thing, that they're not really sure how it got there.
Why would it differ, even if the town council approved that tree or bench or whatever it is, and it was a need for an expansion of a parking lot or the creation of a building? Why wouldn't we not have the right tree and move it anywhere?
Well, I think we, I think that anything can, the vote of the town council, you know, we can, we change our mind all the time. So I don't think that's an issue, what I.
So why don't we just send out or publish this notice that you're not to create private memorials on town property and expect them to be maintained in perpetuity? It's just not a right.
And that's why you're here.
And it has to be, I think it has to be some kind of a notice, like in the Trotec Times, where everybody knows it, you can't, not, not just some of the boards and commissions.
It's a good idea.
First one I've had all night.
Sure.
Does that mean that the ones that are already in existence, though, we're not going to fool around with those? Or are we?
Well, they're subject to removal.
There's no, no rights have been created. That's the, that's the problem and that's what Al is talking about when he says they don't want anybody to feel hurt. There are no, these are, you know, these may be cherished, uh, monuments or memories for some folks and to, to allow them to have the false impression uh, that they are as enduring as the memory that they supposedly represent is, is simply something that we have to dispel. So hopefully, uh, that will help the future situation. That will also prepare people who have a present situation from understanding that it is subject to being, uh, you know, deemed to be removal. Um, we do have the power of eminent domain. We can take private property if, for, for a public purpose. And the examples that Al gave were public purposes. So there certainly is, we, we have no, we do not have to offer an explanation for taking property that is our own property presently being occupied for some, um, um, moral purpose, you know, that we unfortunately has, has to give way to another purpose for the town. So I think everybody's trying to do the right thing here and get the message out.
So Michael, can you draft this? Or do you think you can draft it? And we should see it at the next council meeting.
Yeah, I, I, I.
No, I, 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 let me, let me.
I think you probably should.
I think I should because that way, uh, Michael will probably appreciate me more.
Who's telling you I don't? So for the next council meeting?
Yeah, I'll, I'll have something for you.
But would you agree, Al, that it should also be publicized? Like in the newspapers or something?
I, I, I do agree with that. You know, because then people can read it. You know, everybody can read it.
Right.
You know? So, great.
Item D, review of investment policy statement and other matters concerning town pensions.
These, uh, these next three are kind of lumped together. They're kind of an offshoot of the most recent pension committee meeting. And, uh, prior to the meeting, the, our investment advisor uh, had requested the ability to move funds from what he thought was a risky investment to a more safer investment. In retrospect, he was reading the tea leaves correctly and saw some of the things going on in the world. But the policy that we have doesn't allow that. And the chairman, Mr. Fawnin, requested that the, the entire council see the actual investment policy statement that's in place currently for the pension plan. And I was to solicit from other finance directors, uh, what they did as far as that same topic. So the first, the first item you have, number one, is basically our current investment and policy statement as it relates to the pension plan. Uh, there is probably some room for tweaking it. Uh, there's, there's different, uh, names given to the consultant. In some cases, it's the, whether you're talking about the consultant or the investment manager, it's not really clear. So I think we're going to try to, you know, clean that up a little bit in time for the next pension committee meeting. If there's any questions on that. The second document again is my, uh, research that I did to the other finance folks and they basically concurred that, uh, they can't move money around unilaterally without going to the pension committee to get the blessing. And that's what our feeling was. But there was one member on the committee who, uh, actually wanted to give that authority to our advisor and, uh, the chairman requested I get some research from other towns. And Mike has got some research from other, uh, managers as well. So I think we're pretty much on board with that, that we're not going to allow that to happen, uh, without a vote of the committee. The third item talks about the volunteer fire plan. When the plan was put in place, uh, in nineteen ninety-one, uh, mirroring the town plan and the police plan, you were allowed to earn up to thirty years of credited service. There are a wave of approximately four or five folks that are now, in, in nineteen, two thousand nine, the cap was increased to thirty-five years as that bubble of membership got, exceeded the thirty-year cap. And that same bubble of membership is approaching thirty-four, thirty-five years. There's two options. We can either review this every five years or so and keep bumping the cap five years out of cliff as long as this current population keeps going. Or look at it globally and say, okay, if a member starts when they're eighteen years old and the department's mandatory retirement age is age seventy, theoretically, a member can get fifty-two years of service if they meet the points criteria. They don't make the points, they don't get the credit. So either we vote to look at this on a five-year, keep bumping it up five years out of cliff, or just say, okay, the most a person can earn if they meet all the point criteria is fifty-two years of service, eliminate the word cap at all. And just say, as long as the person accrues years of credited service pursuant to the regulations of the merit service retirement plan, so many meetings, so many drills, so many calls and so on, they get the credit. It was discussed at the pension committee meeting and you see, uh, comments in the back there. I believe a motion was passed, I don't remember by who. Vice Chairman Wentworth, in fact, to, uh, eliminate the cap, recommend, recommended elimination of the cap to the town council. And, uh, this discussion basically was anything we could do to encourage the folks to keep volunteering should be deemed as, you know, a good idea. So the pension committee voted to recommend to the town council to eliminate that cap on the, uh, merit service retirement plan. Uh, we did it effective July first, twenty fifteen. The actuary did make a comment there would be a ten thousand dollar impact. Defer it to next year if you'd like. No one's at that thirty-five-year cap right now. If you want to make it effective July one, two thousand sixteen instead, that's not going to harm anybody.
Anthony, should, should we have formal action on that?
Yeah, the bottom, the bottom of the page.
I mean, you're, you're saying though, moving it out to two thousand sixteen is not going to harm any.
No, because the, the bubble is at, you're at thirty-four right now.
Right.
No one's approaching the thirty-fifth year. So you could defer it a year and have it kick in July one, two thousand sixteen instead.
I'll make the motion, be here, be it hereby resolved that the North Grand River Town Council pursuant to the recommendation of the pension committee hereby approves the elimination of the cap on years of credited service. The members of the merit service retirement plan for volunteer fire ambulance personnel can approve effective July one, two thousand sixteen.
Moved by Councilor, uh, Diamond, seconded by Deputy Mayor Wentworth. Roll call.
Mayor Candelar?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Rose?
Yes.
Councilor Angeloni?
Yes.
Councilor Aron?
Yes.
Councilor Diamond?
Yes.
Councilor Fawnin?
Yes.
Councilor PC?
Come back for a minute.
Yes.
So Anthony, you pretty much covered one, two, and three on that.
Yes.
Other than, other than if the town council wants to actually take action on whether or not we like vest our investment advisor with absolute discretion in moving our funds around.
Right.
We didn't feel it was appropriate to do that at the pension committee level without bringing it to the town council. So that's why it came here. We're perfectly willing to take charge of that, but we don't want to make the presumption that the town council wants to abdicate that authority.
What are your, um, thoughts on?
There's two sides to the argument. What happened here was he, he emailed all the members of pension committee, I'm going to say, uh, late July. And we had something like an August twelfth quarterly meeting scheduled. He wanted to move sixty-eight percent of our plan basically to cash, uh, in late July. And I was troubled by it. I think a number of people were troubled by it. We traded emails and felt that, well, we, we might do it short-term. So we could meet in August and then discuss it more thoroughly and make a decision. Michael pointed out to us that we could not legally do that. We had to convene for a meeting. So nothing happened. Money stayed where it was invested. We didn't lose gobs of money, but there was some loss between late July and August twelfth. August twelfth, we did vote to reallocate the investment vehicles we were going to use. And fortunately, we did that because, as you all know, the market's been in a absolute death spiral for the last couple of weeks. So we did avert the major losses. A motion was made at the August twelfth meeting to vest that discretion in the investment advisor. Basically, his attitude was he has the ability with all of his accounts to make that decision, go to cash when he thought it was appropriate or make an investment that he thought was appropriate. We, nobody seconded that motion. So that's why it came here because I, I don't think it's necessarily a pension committee decision. It's probably a town council decision. Because we're changing the investment policy. I don't think the support is there to give him absolute discretion, but I could be wrong. But it probably is appropriate to look at our investment policy. I still think that that's most appropriately a decision for this body rather than the pension committee. But I'll go either way.
See, that, it is, it is a dangerous thing and I had, I didn't, I didn't look at the stock market yesterday or today.
You're lucky.
Down. Okay. So that just blows my theory. Because as of Friday, if you had done nothing, you were up. So if you sold August twelfth, you actually lost money on Friday. But apparently today is down again, so.
Overall, the last two weeks, the market's down over ten percent.
Right, but on Friday it was ahead of where it had been, so.
I don't think so, but that's not worth debating. As of today, it was a ten percent plus correction.
Probably neither. So the guy's actually pretty good if he had come out in July.
Yeah.
Yes.
Al, but he leaves you to read it, but he read it right.
Right. I'm just on that one.
Just that, our, we don't have the ability to allow him to make that move without the pension committee convening and then to get five member committee together. We're having difficulties with that and we want to give him the ability to do that off the cuff without, you know, maybe go to find myself a buddy, but not convening the entire committee. For short-term, not violating the investment policy statement, you know, in general, but if he sees a short-term situation occurring, does he have the ability to jump on it?
Or can you convene less than like three members of the committee?
Well, if they never convene, five can have form.
Right, so.
It's really five.
And in the, in the scheme of things, um, you know, he doesn't have, the consultant, uh, doesn't have the, the discretion, but that's different from a fund manager. Let's just say you're taking large cap value, right? And you have some manager that you've selected. That manager runs the fund. Inside that fund, yeah, that manager's moving.
They trade it all.
Trading all over, right. So it's a difference, and, and we don't have in the, in the policy, investment policy statement, the latitude that says, okay, if there's a band or a range that says we want to be in any given time between five percent and ten percent cash, that we give discretion of the consultant to do that without coming to the full pension board, you know? And that's, that's what we're wrestling with and we don't find any, any of those towns with pensions that, I haven't yet, that has given their advisor or consultant, whatever you want to call them, this full discretion to do.
Or discretion over, over a portion of the value, like.
Yeah, I mean, you, potentially, we could write something that says, okay, we'll, we'll put parameters on it and say, you know, when a market starts to go, you know? But again, that's got to be discussed here because it's a, it's a, it's the document we're looking to change, if, if you want to change it, before, you know, the pension committee does anything.
You could go, you could go all the way back to oh eight, you know? People who stayed made a small fortune up until three weeks ago. People who sold in oh eight at the bottom, lost their shirt and are, you know, lost.
They recovered in over five years. That's true.
You know? I mean, it's, I don't know.
Right, so again, philosophically, to your point, Al, is, is, if you want to be able to, the discretion to, to time the market and read the tea leaves correctly this time, or a long-term policy that says, listen, if you're invested in the market, you're invested in the market for the long haul. You're not going to try and time the market every, every, just two sides of that, that argument, you know, to give him.
See, because typically, does he get, he gets fees for moving the money like that?
No, no, he's, he's on a fee, so.
It won't be based on the value of the account.
Right, no, no worry there about any commissions or anything like that.
Not my expertise. I don't know. What you guys want to do?
Well, we're, we're perfectly willing to wrestle with it. We just didn't want to presume that we have the authority to do that without coming back here and saying, you guys want some input on it? You want to make the decision? If you're, if you're willing to let us make that decision, we, we can do that. Fight at next meeting.
I think I'm willing to let them.
Yeah, so am I.
Yeah, I am too.
Okay, so if we screw up, Anthony.
Well, somebody's.
I'm doing sales, Joe, that's all right.
All right.
Okay.
We'll hold you to it.
Where am I? Let's see.
Appropriation transfers?
Appropriation transfers fiscal year two thousand fourteen and fifteen.
Before we jump off the last one, you just want to, for clarification purpose, you might want to throw a motion together just getting the consensus that the, the council's willing to allow the pension committee to modify or work with the investment consultant and, and move assets around as the pension committee sees fit.
Modify the investment policy. Is that what's up?
Investment policy statement.
And if Anthony makes a mistake, he will.
So let me just make that motion the way it's in the minutes that that's what the decision was.
All right.
What was the motion?
I make a motion. To allow the pension committee to modify the investment policy statement. Is that right? Okay.
Does that work for you, Anthony?
Yes.
Second.
Moved by Councilor Diamond, seconded by Councilor Angeloni.
She's new at that.
Roll call.
Mayor Candelar?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Wentworth?
Yes.
Councilor Angeloni?
Yes.
Councilor Aron?
Yes.
Councilor Diamond?
Yes.
Councilor Fawnin?
Yes.
Councilor Rose?
Yes.
All right. Appropriation transfer.
Going back, if you don't mind, for a moment to EE review of the town building status. This ties in with also the appropriation transfers for central services. We have two buildings that are currently vacant, the old senior center and the auger house that is constantly costing the town money. So my question to the town council is, has any discussion been about these two buildings? Where are they going? What we want to do with them? Uh, what we're going to invest in them each month? Because currently in my budgets under central services, there is no funding for them, but we are incurring expenses.
What about the senior center?
We have a water meter attached to it that's running fifty to fifty-five dollars a quarter just for the meter to sit there. Now, the original plan was that the food pantry was going to go in there and that building was going to stay open. Since then, we've had public works, uh, close the buildings down as far as we don't heat them anymore or whatever. There's still electricity in the buildings. There's still, um, meters in the buildings that is costing the town. And then at some point, do you need capital money to either keep the buildings with the roof on them, painting them or whatever? So maybe going forward, you know, town council members can discuss what we're going to do with the vacant buildings. You know, if we're going to put money into them, if we pull a water meter so that nothing can be used in the old senior center. If we're going to rent them. We rented the auger house at one time. Um, so for maybe suggestion for, you know, some future meeting, discuss where we're going with these vacant buildings and, you know, funding also the expenses for them to sit vacant.
Is there historical buildings in the old town hall? The original?
The white one?
Yeah.
That's connected to the cemetery?
Yeah.
I know at one time Park and Rec wanted to use them for programs and to rent them out for, you know, like a baby shower or that type of thing. Like I said, currently that and the auger house sit vacant.
But when they gave us the numbers on that, we decided that that, we weren't, it wasn't worth it for us to do that. But when they gave us the numbers on that, we decided that that, we weren't, it wasn't worth it for us to do that, based on the, the numbers they provided for that.
You mean for the rental?
Yeah.
For the rental, Rose?
The rental or the programming.
Okay.
Because Park and Rec, when they wanted to move a program there, it was just as overflow and, you know, they had no idea that the program could lose money, for all they knew. They didn't have any definitive numbers on the program, they just wanted the space to use when it was presented to us. And so, we weren't gonna commit to that.
Now, the auger house currently has a lot of Park and Rec.
Right, it's storage.
It's storage, it's cold storage. So, again, going forward, at some point, it's gonna need to get painted, a roof, demolition, whatever.
Or torn down, why can't it be torn down?
Yeah, I mean-
Is there historical value to it? I don't know.
Can we get some information?
Yeah, I remember to see it.
How's that with black?
It's got a black on it.
But you, that, just because it's, I thought we were told, just because it had historical designation doesn't mean that you have to maintain it and keep it there forever, that you can petition or whatever to get it off, you know, to, to knock it down or to get it off the historical registry, that it's- Maybe some research can be done, see if we can do that.
So, that's what I've asked of the council, to think about what we're going to do with the vacant buildings. It's costing the town money currently, or it could potentially cost the town a lot of money if we need new roofs. Well, it's, or whatever.
I think the old, the old, old, old town hall.
Actively rented.
That, that, I'll tell you what, that, that's a nice little property that some little business could go in there. It's big enough that they could warehouse some stuff and, and have an office space in there. You know, that might be worth giving to a real estate agent to see what they could get for rent.
This, the old senior center, the white building?
Yeah.
Is that what you wanna call it?
The little one.
The little one. Next to some tier, yeah. I mean, it has a kitchen in it, too, I don't know, if somebody wants to make a coffee shop out of it or something, but-
Not the senior center, right?
No, the senior center.
The senior center, I guess.
It was, what was, the last use of it was the senior center.
Okay, but it was still the old town hall.
At one point in time, yes.
So, just a thought, like I said, it's, there's money being appropriated to cover deficits in the account, 'cause there is no budget money form, but there are expenses. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Is that building in a condition that could be rented out if we looked at that?
Which one?
Or would it take a bunch of money to?
Fran looked at it when the food pantry was, was looking at it.
Do you have a problem with a little back porch for, if we were to rent it, if we asked you a back porch, then something would be getting to it.
Yeah, I think Al's idea might be worth pursuing, I mean, you take, take a realtor-
Yeah, we wouldn't have to do it, if we just rented the building, someone might not even want, you know, they don't need a deck or anything, you know? If the business went in there.
Right, I think you can get a small café in there, or somebody, you know, somebody would take it over.
Yeah. Right, so that's my question, is, I would like to know, like, what kind of outlet it would take from us, from us to-
Rent it as is.
Bidding property owner, right?
Rent it as is.
It's not in bad shape, it's got a decent roof.
Yeah, that's my question, I mean, is it leaking water, or whatever?
Someone else would pay for the electric and heat.
Right.
That's ours.
Well, they're drained now, so we're not paying any heat, but we are paying electricity and meters and so forth, so.
Yep, telephone bill.
Telephone bill, ours, yeah.
Unless it has historical significance, wouldn't it make more sense to sell it and tax it?
Good issue with that, too, is the cemetery.
Yeah, we have a cemetery.
It's that same parcel land cemetery sits on.
It's all one parcel cemetery in that building?
Where is it? Oh, the town owns it.
The cemetery belongs to the church.
Not that one.
Which one?
The one next to the senior center.
Oh, right. And that, you have to find out.
The building front is there.
That belongs, that one belongs to Brant.
I don't know, go back to the seventeenth century.
I'm trying to get down there, it's like twenty dollars.
That's the only way that would work, if you had to separate it.
All right, we gotta think about that.
All right, what's the appropriation transfer?
Second. Ten times I've said it.
You got some fourth time.
I thought it was ten times already.
Moved by Deputy Mayor Wentworth, seconded by-
Mayor Kendall R.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Wentworth.
Yes.
Councilor Angeloni.
Yes.
Councilor Aronin.
Yes.
Councilor Diamond.
Yes.
Councilor Fawnin.
Yes.
Councilor Rose.
Yes.
Citizen statement, petition.
They all went home.
We bored them all to death, so.
They all went home.
All right, I have motion, move.
So moved. Executive session.
Yeah, we have, we've actually got two items there, and then a non-meeting after that. But on the first, I'd like to invite Michelle Knockwood in, just some information we need to discuss on one of those issues.
All right.
I need breakfast.
Yeah.
I need breakfast. Lisa, thank you for-
Lisa, take some flowers, please.